The City of Seaside and the City Council Successive Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. A regular meeting here at Hall Court, Council Chambers, Thursday, August 7th, 2025, 5:00 PM on roll call, please.
Council and agency member Miller.
Here.
Council and agency member Burks.
Here.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Here.
Mayor Protim and Vice Chair Pacheco. Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We will have a moment of silence and then I will ask Mayor Protim to lead us in pledge if he would. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go down to number four and review the agenda. Mr. City Manager, is there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There are no requested changes to the agenda.
Thank you so much. I do anticipate some type of recess around the 7:30 hour. Next, we'll move into public comment, item number five. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council on matters underneath our jurisdiction. They do so now during public comment for up to three minutes. We ask that you hold your comments for presentation items when that item is called. This is also the time to comment on presentation items. For the benefit of the record, I ask that you state your name. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Hi, my name is Tom DeBosni. I live at Carson Street. What I'm about to talk about is the pickleball courts on Wheeler Street because of the ongoing issue. Couple of years back, I addressed the council and complained about how the traffic was going to be. The council assured us that it wasn't going to be that bad and was it going to go outrageous? I live in a place called Livermore and behind me was a school, was abandoned for a while. They opened it up as a charter school. That charter school can only hold 300 students. They promised us that it wasn't going to get bad. It went from 300 to 1,200. The parking, the traffic was horrendous. People couldn't leave in the morning to go to work. People couldn't get home in the afternoon because of the parking. Now, here we go with Wheeler Street. I said it was going to be bad. It's gotten bad. It's gotten worse. Last couple of weeks ago, I went around and counted cars on a Saturday. We had 40 cars in that little area, 40 cars. Now we're having more problems. I mean vandalism. We're having the people parking in our driveways. Just happened yesterday when I was at home. A lady pulls up, pulls right in my driveway and I was just happened to be outside. I said, excuse me, you're parking in my driveway. Oh, oh. So I didn't have to call the police to have them come out inside or tow her. But it's ongoing. Some of the other issues we've had, we've had, like I said, vandalisms. We just had an incident at one of our neighbors. We've had people throwing stuff into our yards. We've had people throwing cigarette butts in a dry area right next to another neighbor's fence. We've had these people being, I mean, I've had one incident where I walked out one of the gates and the person started getting mad at me because I said hello to his dog. He says, you know, that dog can do what it wants. You can't tell me what to do. And he took the dog and he went up to the pickleball court. So they know we're not very happy down there. So we're getting kind of harassed by them. We are the people that are paying the taxes that live there. Most of these people that are coming in don't even live in Seaside. They're coming from all over because of course Carmel closed theirs down. Vigo Iago had to reduce theirs. They did all kinds of things to help their citizens. So far, we haven't seen that. All we keep seeing is more cars and more people. If you ever go up there on a Saturday or Sunday in the morning when they first open up, you'll see 30, 40 people standing around waiting their turn. Just to play pickleball and they're there for like an hour, two hours, three hours waiting. We can't keep having this. Something's got to be done. I don't know what you can do, but I can tell you what some of them did. One of them went ahead. And they'd use those parking passes for the people who live on the thing. So the permit, so the people can't park there anymore. Maybe put, make all the curbs red. I don't know. I don't have any ideas what to do. I'm not that person. But I do know that we're getting tired of constant problems with this. So we need to have the help to somebody on the city council step forward and say, okay, what do you want? How can we make this work? Because I know the police departments, they're practically living up in our area now. We call them all the time to get up there and take care of the problems. And they're taking care of them. You know, they're coming up and some of them, I feel sorry for some of these people because I had one person that came in, parked us toward the opposite way. Am I done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Lucille Ushkopp and I live on Carson Street and I've been living on there since I was eight years old. And I am a tennis player and I'm a pickleball player and I've been playing tennis over there before they even built the pickleball court. But now it's getting really bad because everybody is parking in I Street and they're telling their friends and their friends are telling more friends that because it's free, they're all parking all over the place. So on Sunday, I think it was the 20th. My neighbor calls my husband to tell him that someone's cutting my juniper trees. Did we hire a gardener? And my husband goes, no. He goes, let me leave work, come home, I'll call the police. I wasn't home at the time. Come home and all the trees are cut from the bottom and all the branches and the bushes on the bottom. He leaves it there littered. My son had to come up and clean it up. Now I feel violated. My house got vandalized. I'm scared to go up there and play pickleball because this guy is kind of aggressive. And then about three days later, I'm taking off to go out of town. I tell my neighbor across the street, watch over my house. I didn't think anything was going to happen. Well, sure enough, he parks in the same spot. He takes out his clippers out, chops more trees. And my neighbor Vince across the street came over to try to stop him, stood in front of him to protect the bushes. And he tells Vince, you better watch yourself. And he tried to maneuver around Vince to cut more bushes. Well, the neighbor, Tom's wife, called the police a second time. And he was aware that the police were coming, so he got in his car and took off. So something does definitely has to be done. I had two bids coming in. I'm waiting for the bids to come in for my trees because he cut them lower. And they're leaning against my fence that goes to my backyard, but now they're going to be top heavy. So if they, if they get top heavy, they're going to fall over and into my backyard and lock my fence over. Now I lost my train of thought. But anyway, I'm waiting for those bids to come in. They also said if there was anything that he had cut prior to that with his clippers, like poison ivy or something like that, that could also kill my trees or the trees can go into shock and die. And those trees are worth about $4,000. This is what the tree professionals told me. But something, Tom's right, there's something that has to be done. They're parking all over the place. They're parking in the condos, parking spots, I understand, where people, those spots are safe for people that are visitors. And the speed is getting bad. I'll tell you one thing really quickly. I heard a car speeding up Carson Street and I looked out the window. I didn't see the car heads of yet. The car swerves, flies into my back, my side of my yard, stops about a foot before my fence that goes right on the other side of my bedroom. I thought for sure, I just closed my eyes. So I thought this, this guy is going to go through my living, my house. So either put bumpers on the street or something, maybe something like they did on Tweed Street in Delray Oaks. I don't know. But a police report has been made. We've called the police three times now for the same gentleman here. I think she's got the pictures if you want to see them. And it's in the hands of the DA. And I do plan on taking him to small claims court. That's it. But something definitely has to be done.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, city manager, and city attorney. Bobby Maxwell, the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Commission. I have a couple of suggestions. There is more than ample parking available down the street.
Excuse me, Sheriff, are you here as the chairman of the?
Okay, I'm a concerned citizen.
Okay.
Let me put. I'm a bunch of things. Anyway. I am. But there's, there is, parking is a big issue and, and to be honest. Today, when I came to park to come to this council meeting. The thought crossed my mind that maybe I need to run for council and get elected, hopefully, so that I have a parking space on in front. Because I had to park down the street and my knees messed up and I had to walk limp, I should say, to this meeting. There is, I'm going to say there's ample parking. Close proximity to that Wheeler tennis courts, Oldemire Center, Patullo Swim Center, the teen center, all up and down Wheeler. Those people are there for exercise and that would be a good way to warm up is walk from parking down there, walk a block to the tennis courts. Or pickleball courts, whatever you want to call it. It's combination. As far as the dog doing its business in there, we, on our Parks and Rec Commission have supplied dog waste stations and waste receptacle. Units and all the parks and even multiple units in all our parks in our city. Another thing that I was going to say, and on a really positive note, that's all positive too. We're in the presence of a superstar. That, that has made our city really proud. And, and that person is Dominique Davis. Who went through the Harvard Kennedy School and graduated from that program. And I'm really, really proud of this young lady. And happy for her moving up in her, in her career. And I believe I'm speaking for the whole community as far as us being proud of her. To be part of our community and doing such a great job here. And whatever she touches. So thank you for your time.
Evening, everybody. Mayor, councilpeople, attorney. The new city manager. I'm Ray Reardon. I'm just here as a private citizen. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor for appointing a new NIC person, Stephanie Sprouse. Is that correct? Yep. We needed the seventh person. Second of all, the Hillby upgrade is fantastic. Man, it's slowing everybody down. I got my yellow lines. Everybody's happy. Third, the cleanup in downtown Broadway, all the bird poop, I guess, it's all gone, looking good. Hopefully we stay on top of that a little bit, maybe. I don't know how you do all that, but anyway. And then the only negative thing I got to bring up is I drove by the new parking lot that was built on Notre Bueno at the Cutino Park. You know, right by the escape thing and all that. And I just don't know how many people come to that park at 6:00 AM to play on the rides and everything. And the parking lot is full of pickups. Construction trucks. I think it's became the new parking grounds for the trucks. Not, not regular vehicles. And I don't think it's fair for the people that want to come and use a park even at eight o'clock that there's no parking. I don't think we built that for. So maybe some signs up there, you can park from till 6:00 AM. I don't know, you know, but anyway, good job everybody, looking good. So thank you.
Hi, Linda Cunningham, homeless committee, but speaking as private citizen. Thank you, everybody. What beautiful weather. It's just been so beautiful on Seaside. Sunday in the Blues, fabulous, just great weather every time. I know you guys are complete control of that. Thank you so much. National Night Out, absolutely fabulous. The moisture today is wonderful. We're just so blessed. I don't know how we could be any luckier. Seaside's place is such a beautiful place. I, there's so many great things. Seaside Police, you resolve that standoff with the person, no shooting. I think there was the story flock cameras to find some tool thief. National Night Out was great. The drone show was cool. Everybody in the city who made National Night Out, a lot of people from the city, fabulous job. Thank you so much. And Sunday Blues, everybody there, the cleanup team is great. Not the most glamorous job, but man, they do a great job. They really keep up with it. It's really nice. I thought it was so great hearing from all the officers at National Night Out. Our friendship with the Delray Oaks PD, it was, you know, cute and funny. And I believe I heard one of the officers say they joined Seaside PD from Monterey. And if you want to be a police officer, Seaside is the city. Can you believe that's actually happening here in Seaside? I mean, a lot of people's minds are stuck in the seventies, the eighties, maybe the nineties, when there's a lot more problems here. And here we have, you know, we got it. We, you know, this guy from Monterey is happy to be in Seaside. I'm serious. There's people who would just argue to the cows come home that that's just not possible, but they just don't know Seaside. I'm not on any of the corporate media. I'm on Blue Sky, which is a public benefit corporation. It's not publicly traded. It operates with independent funding. And it's not under the control of a billionaire. And I would really like to see Seaside add it to your social media feeds because I don't get anything because I'm not on the other ones. Hillby again fabulous, bead bumps are great. I wondered about the, I mean, turning at Flores off, you know, that's like gliding on glass. It's fabulous too. Off of Broadway and it's got that strip, the reflector strip for the stop signs on the pole. And I wondered, hey, are those working? Do we need more of those? Plus it just looks pretty. I read in the Pine Cone a few weeks ago that the federal government is requiring them to remove the rainbow painted crosswalk they just put down. It's distracting, some roll. I thought we had some kind of plan to paint the pavement with the hello in many languages. I would just hate to put all that down and then have the feds come in and say if to take it out because whatever. Then again, it might just be that there's some delicate people in Monterey who can't see a rainbow. It's hard to say. I just would hate to see the money wasted. I thought maybe somebody should look into that before we did that. I think it sounds beautiful. I actually looked around and I saw street painting can make. Shoot, thank you.
Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff and citizens. Since there was no prayer, I'd like to add one now. Lord, let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for your sacrifice on the cross, that we may be forgiven and you paid for our sins, even though you sinned not. And that we could forgive others, help us to know and do your will in this city council to follow the Bible and the original intent of the Constitution. And help us to have revival in this country. And join you in heaven forever as children of God. And also please be with the the prayer vigil tonight, which starts at 6:00 PM in front of the Planned Parenthood Clinic on Hillby. You're invited to join us and we have devotions and prayers and singing. And we hope that that clinic will close just like Santa Cruz and four others in this regional Planned Parenthood group and dozens of have closed around the nation. They, and we know that they said that they do many things besides abortion, but when they don't get paid for the abortion, they close the clinic. So there's some inconsistency there. And transparency needs to be done. Lord, we're sorry that Margaret Sanger had this negative feeling towards Negroes. She considered them weeds and they should be eliminated. So she put the clinics in the poorest districts in the cities and in the ethnic groups. So those, those people would have high rates of abortion. And right now it's 66% abortion rate. So 66% of African Americans don't make it safely from the womb. So Lord, please protect these young children, these preborns and that there will be abortion will become unthinkable in the, in Seaside, California and around the United States. And see. Also help there to be an understanding from the city council tonight to support free speech. And we won't be having like in England, if you're praying in front of an abortion clinic there silently, you can be arrested by the police and taken, taken to jail. And we want to have support for the Second Amendment in this city. There should be respect for that and no special zoning or thousand foot limits. And so God bless the city council and they would follow the Lord's will in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Thank you for your comments. The caller ending in 9902, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening. This is Nina Beatty. The Army is planning a burn this fall at the Ford Road Superfund site and they've already started doing prep work at the site and closing trails. I asked the City of Seaside to petition the US EPA to stop the burn and to permanently stop these burns because of the health and environmental hazards to the public and risks to property. I've contacted the County Board of Supervisors, the cities of Monterey, Carmel, Marina. Community organizations, churches and members of the public must work to stop this. Blue Zones Project must oppose the burns. The Air Resources District sued the state unsuccessfully several years ago, but it's the federal government that can stop this with public uproar. Site A is in northeast of the Superfund site near Giggling and Parker Flats Road, CSU MB, East Garrison, of course, Salinas Valley Agriculture and Toro Park. It's closest to Marina. But the smoke blows all over the county. So please protect your neighbors and Seaside residents. Dioxins and ferns are deadly chemical compounds that are byproducts from burning chlorinated materials from the herbicides they've used there, such as Agent Orange and munitions. This toxic smoke has, has these chemicals as well as white phosphorus, munitions, chemicals and metals, chemical weapons, herbicides, poison oak, orishio, as well as the chemical weapons, herbicides, poison oak, orishio, as well as the burn chemicals. Seaside has been hit very, very hard by the burns in the past. People have gotten very sick from the smoke and fallout, including children. People with existing lung and health conditions are at greater risk. The smoke and fallout contaminates schools and yards, gets inside buildings and blows all over the county. Burns have frequently gotten out of control. And the unexploded ordinance and white phosphorus can explode as well, sending fragments everywhere. All of this, despite repeated assurance, everything is fine from the military. For nature, the burns are a disaster. Birds, insects, reptiles, small and large animals, endangered species trapped and killed by the flames and smoke. Vegetation and trees and habitat are destroyed. The public has seen animals on fire fleeing the burn, such as deer on fire. The article by militarypoisons.org, May 19th, documented toxicity and hazards of Ford ord burns and past problems. The Ford ord Community Advisory Group and others are not getting their questions answered. This community is still dealing with the Moss Landing Fire Contamination and unknown long-term health effects from that. Why would we want a fire burning on the Superfund site to add or more health hazards from the contamination there and make people sick? And we've of course seen the situation in Santa Maria and then the terrible fire that happened at the Grand Canyon that was supposedly managed. I ask the city council to take action to stop this burn and petition EPA to end this hazard to our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Davis on a phenomenal accomplishment. Just the upward mobility that we're having with our staff is amazing. And this is one of those accomplishments that should be celebrated. I'm glad that she was featured and illustrated in the newsletter that comes out for the city. Second, there was a listening session with Exotics on Broadway that wasn't really publicized. It was posted maybe an hour before it started. And I'd like to understand where are we posting this? Where are we allowing community to get notifications about this? Because it wasn't posted on the previous newsletter. It didn't go out to nobody. It happened to be posted on social media and somebody sent it to me. And so I'd like to know where are we making this publicized? Because nobody's seeing it. And there was maybe three people that attended, four at the most. I did have an opportunity to ask a couple of questions. I would have liked more time to ask more questions so that we can get a better understanding. I think the event organizers were great with their responses. I'd just like to see more advertisement and to have the knowledge of where this is being advertised. It was stated that it was advertised to the local businesses. Though it was open to the community, but yet the community was not advised of it until an hour before. And it happened from 3:00 to 4:00 PM yesterday. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. City manager, are there any questions, issues or concerns you can answer or speak to at this time?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, we do have a meeting on Wheeler Street with the residents regarding the pickleball on Monday. Appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all. And I think there's some creative solutions that we can look at together. So looking forward to meeting with with the neighborhood on Monday. Be my second meeting out there so far regarding this topic. So looking forward to getting into that. Cuttino Park, as far as parking lot, we'll look into that. There is a ordinance on tonight's agenda that may also help with the flexibility of addressing parking challenges in some of our parks. And then as far as the listening session for Exotics on Broadway, I believe there were two listening sessions that were featured in some of our social media and not sure if it's in our newsletter or not. But I do know that both staff and Exotics on Broadway representatives are more than willing to answer the questions. So if you have any, please feel free to send those to myself directly and we can get those answered. Thank you.
But the information about the meeting for Exotics was posted.
It was posted.
Do we know where it was posted? I mean, the standard places, all of our standard places? Social media places?
Yes, and it was distributed in the Economic Development Business Newsletter.
Okay. And on social media?
Correct.
Yeah. I guess I guess my question really was geared towards the business owners and 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 community members that live in that area. Is that correct? Okay. All right, let's move on to item number six, six A, Public Agency Communications. A, received presentation from the Blue Zone Project. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, we'll have a presentation or commentary from Cindy Foster, Res, a Director of Community Programs and Marketing for Blue Zones.
I think I skipped the city news, but we can come back. Or did you have it ready? You want to do that? No, she's already down.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cindy Foster Ruiz and I'm the Director of Community Programs and Marketing for Blue Zones Project. I'm thrilled to be here today to celebrate the Blue Zones Project worksite approval of the city of Seaside, specifically City Hall. It's the second municipality in Monterey Peninsula to become a Blue Zones Project approved worksite. And it includes, it's part of the 66 worksite. Sorry, 69 work sites to become Blue Zones Project approved in Monterey County. So as some of you may know, Blue Zones Project is a community-led wellbeing initiative designed to help make healthy choice the easy choice. When our entire community participates from our work sites to our schools and our restaurants, the small changes contribute to huge benefits of all of us, for all of us, from lower healthcare costs to improve productivity and ultimately a higher quality of life. The city of Seaside and specifically City Hall joined the efforts by illustrating a deep commitment to creating a healthier workplace for their employees and promoting a culture where healthy choices are available by default. They have implemented a number of worksite transformations that demonstrate their commitment to improving the health and wellbeing of their employees. They've added a pervasive brand for wellbeing called Waves of Wellness to organize and align all wellbeing efforts. They've added a check-in checkout under desk bike peddler to encourage staff to move naturally. They've added a walking route for staff that encourage them to walk through the Seaside Farmers Markets. And I also want to recognize the amazing best practices already in place, including the wellness program with fitness discounts, healthy catering guidelines, and vending machine guidelines at all of City of Seaside facilities. And the many opportunities to connect and volunteer with the community. I would like to recognize Melissa, Vanessa and Dan, who were instrumental in moving the work along and for being amazing wellbeing champions. We are extremely impressed by the City of Seaside City's Hall commitment to employee wellbeing. And it has been an incredible, incredible privilege to partner and support them with implementing researched best practices that help make the healthy choice the easy choice. So on behalf of Blue Zones Project Monterey County and our local sponsors, Salinas Valley Health, Taylor Farms and Montage Health, we are thrilled to recognize City of Seaside City Hall has a Blue Zones Project approved worksite. So please join me in congratulating them today. And I have a certificate for all of you. I have a banner, some decals. I would like to get a photo. I don't know if we should do it later. I know we so congratulations.
Thank you. And a banner.
And a banner too.
Come on down, Dan.
Thank you so much. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to share the sentiments from Blue Zones Project with the rest of the city staff. I know we've been working a lot, really hard over the last six years. I think the effort started back in 2019. It's been a long road and we are looking forward to the certification, the full county and the City of Seaside certification, which will be coming in the next month or so. So this is just that one piece and we couldn't do it without all the support from the city council and from the staff that really bought into the vision of the Blue Zones Project. So I am very honored to be a part of this and I'm really looking forward to maintaining the momentum of living, living better, stronger, healthy. Thank you.
It's only been six years now. That, you know, that reminds me, and I want to think that the council for supporters from day one, it has been six years. I remember when me and Mayor Carbone from San City went to Salinas to try to figure out what is this blue zone thing? Right? What is this blue zone thing? And so once we heard the presentation, we said, how do we figure out how to bring this to the peninsula? How do we figure out how to bring this to our city? You know, speaking for myself and and brought it back to the council and they bought onto it. And so the council has been working together for the last six years trying to finally get this designation for, and really it's not about, you know, the cities, about the residents living a better, healthy life. And it is things that we can do to promote that. And we've been doing that all along. And like Dan said, we have a real, the official ceremony coming up here as soon as they, the Blue Zone people can affect this scheduling. So I just want to thank all of the city and the employees for buying into this and 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 it started with people, remember when we got rid of some of the plastic? Remember those discussions back in the day and and all those things and and now we're doing canned water. We did some carton water for a while, trying to get away from the bottles, plastic bottles. But I just want people to reflect about how long we've been doing this and little things like that. So thank you so much. And then definitely the employees that get out and walk every day. And then I know some employees take that 5:00, 5:30 for the just for the legal team here at City Manager, about 5:30 that they have a 5:00 wine thing. So, but I I know people leave work, go home. And not you, I'm saying legal. She wants me to say it legally. And that's right. You ain't drinking here, right? So it's about a 5:30 way of doing it. So thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you again. Let's have the City of Seaside News broadcast.
Let's dip into this week's edition of Seaside City News, covering more of the events happening this August. The Last Sunday Blues in the Park event for this year is upon us. On August 10th, enjoy opening act Red Beans and Rice, followed by headliner Anthony Paul's Soul Orchestra. Music runs from 1:00 PM to 4:30. Admission is free and all ages are welcome. Bring your lawn chairs, relax and enjoy the rhythm of summer in Seaside. The US Army is preparing for a prescribed burn at the former Ford ord as part of its ongoing environmental cleanup efforts. The designated area, Unit A, is located within the Ford ord National Monument and the burn may take place anytime between July and December, depending on weather conditions. Community members can stay informed by signing up for the Army's direct notification program to receive updates via text, email or phone. For more details and to register, visit fordordcleanup.com or call 800-852-9699. The County of Monterey Uconnect app has been updated to include a tile that will take users directly to Car Week 2025 real-time traffic information. For more information, including a link to download Uconnect, visit countyofmonterey.gov. After nearly 28 years of dedicated service, the City of Seaside proudly announces the retirement of Fire Captain Alino Linus Alcaran Jr. Serving since November 1997, Captain Alcaran has been a steadfast leader and protector in our community. As he prepares to retire in July of this year, we thank him for his unwavering commitment and congratulate him on a well-deserved retirement. Get ready for the return of Exotics on Broadway, happening Saturday, August 16th from 11:00 to 4:00. Known as the most anticipated event during Monterey Car Week, this one-day spectacle brings over 40,000 spectators and showcases the world's rarest hypercars. New this year, a vendor and hypercar showcase on Fremont Boulevard featuring over 40 hypercars, top sponsors, a VIP lounge and more in a ticketed enclosed area. Broadway Avenue remains free and open to the public, packed with exotic luxury and classic cars across four vibrant blocks. Don't miss this unforgettable automotive experience in Seaside. The City of Seaside invites you to experience the Fiber Arts exhibit at the Walter the Avery Gallery located inside City Hall. Running now through September 4th, this exhibit showcases works by a talented group of artists. From social commentary to personal memory, each piece explores fiber arts through a fresh, contemporary lens. The City of Seaside is excited to announce two nominations in the weekly's Best of Monterey County Readers Poll. The Oldemeyer Center is nominated for Best Hangout for Seniors. And Blues in the Park is up for Best Venue for Blues. Show your Seaside pride. Vote today at montereycountynow.com/bestof. Everyone's Harvest in partnership with Farms Together is offering free boxes of produce at the Seaside Farmers Market every Thursday. Please note that the extended market hours are now 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So mark your calendars and we'll see you out at Laguna Grande Park on Thursdays. Join FOSPA on Saturday, August 9th at Fariaones Park and on the 16th at Lincoln Cunningham Park for a day of service and outdoor fun. For more information, including future workdays and locations, visit friendsofseasideparks.org. Progress continues on Campus Town. A utility coordination and pre-construction meeting was held on July 23rd and site preparation for off-haul begins August 4th. Starting August 11th, up to 12 mega dump trucks will operate daily from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM for two to three weeks. No lane closures are expected, though flaggers may assist with traffic flow. Mass grading will follow lasting four to five weeks with a planned pause on August 20th to ease CSUMB move-in traffic. Wet utility installation is expected to begin in October. We appreciate you tuning in to Seaside City News, where we work to include, innovate and inspire. We'll be back with more exciting events to share with you later this August. Until then, be safe, live fully and enjoy all our city has to offer. Thank you, Seaside.
Thank you so much. We're moved to item number seven. Seven B, which is June and July's 2025 House of the Month Awards. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, to present the House of the Month Awards, I'm going to turn this over to Assistant City Manager Dan Milas.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. I am Dan Milas, the Assistant City Manager, and I am the liaison to the Neighborhood Improvement Commission. And at this point, I'd like to invite our Chair, Ray Reardon, to come up and help present the awards. So this month, we, Mr. Reardon, had the honor of picking the houses to be selected. And so our first selection goes to so the selection was 1141 Amador and we have Mr. and Mrs. Kemp. Are they in the room tonight? They were supposed to be here.
Well, who wants the plaque?
No, no. They told us they were, they were coming. They had family in town. They were going to try and make it. But so this is the home. 1141 Amador, you can see it's got a really nice facade, some great plantings. And Ray, would you like to say a few words on why you picked this one?
Just so everybody knows, each commissioner drives around and picks a home, or five homes, and then brings it back to the next NIC meeting. And then we vote on the best house there is. I really like this house because it shows appeal, shows that they take care of their home and they're very proud of it. They really are. And it really sparks. And also my wife loved it very much too. And so no, I but it just does. And if you want to drive by and just look at it, it really just showcases.
Very happy. Thank you so much.
Yeah. And we'll make sure, we'll make sure that they get their plaque and their gift card. So then moving on. So that was June. And then for July, we have 1336 Kenneth and I believe we have a Miss Victoria Hevichenko in the audience today.
Say a little bit about this one, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if you remember.
I don't know if you remember me, I came by your house, stayed with my wife, and we were looking. And this house went through a huge transformation. I mean, you did a lot of work on it, and I got to see it just one at a time. They just kept working on it, working on it. And it was a lot of your own labor that went into it. And so it was nice to see. So that's why we voted on that one, okay?
Thank you.
The mayor's coming down.
And then there's your little, your gift card to Eda Gardens.
And anybody that wants to nominate a home, just get in contact with Daniel or one of us in IC, and we'll be glad to throw that into the mix. And look at that. I mean, it's just not us picking them, it's Seaside that we're picking, okay? So, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and thank the NIC for the work that they do, and it's very positive, this award, so thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. 8A, approved minutes from June 2024, June 24, 2025, special meeting. B, approve and file city checks for... C, approve and file success agency checks. D... A, D, approved mayor's youth fund contribution requests of $3,000 from Seaside Raiders Youth Football for the 2025 season. E, approve a freeway request from the Seaside High School for costs associated with the annual homecoming parade on September 26, 2025, in the amount of $1,046. F, approve appointment to the Neighborhood Improvement Commission. 8G, adopt a resolution awarding a contract, construction contract to the JMS Cement Contractors in an amount not to exceed 711,274. And approve a construction contingency in the amount of $106,691 for the construction of the Euclid Road Infiltrator Unit Repair Project. And approve the plans and specifications this contract is funding via a Ford Orre reuse authority agreement. H, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a leasing agreement with Placer IA for a software subscription in the amount of $27,250. I, adopt a resolution approving a reclassification of chief building official and modification of the compensation plan. J, adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a joint exercise of power agreement by and between the City of Seaside County Seditation District and the City of Seaside. K, adopt a resolution increasing JMS Cement Contractors Agreement by 300,000 to a total not to exceed $1,447,947.50 for police department parking lot improvements and authorize a $300,000 transfer from the capital reserves. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda. Is there any item that any council member would like to pull off the consent agenda?
Okay.
Okay. K, and A? And H? And H? Anyone else? Is there any item on the consent agenda that someone from the public would like to pull off the consent agenda? I hear that... I'll open a public comment on the consent agenda.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward.
I think you see, come on down, public comment remains open.
Not as tall as you. Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Hugh Smith. I'm a member of the board for the Seaside Raiders. Want to speak on item D and thank the city council for the support of the Seaside Raiders. Our organization has been around since 1972, and since that time, we've been a staple of the community, providing positive outlook and support for young men and women who are now active in football here in our, in our community. The Seaside Raiders is a, is a organization, it's a feeder also, to support other high schools like Seaside High, Carmel, Pacific Grove, Monterey High, Palma. My son played for the Seaside Raiders and he will be a starting quarterback for Monterey High, which I'm very excited and proud of him for. We have one of the most diverse football organizations in the, in our league. And, and I think it, it really shows how inclusive we are as an organization. And so the dollars that you all are making available to us are going right back into the program for equipment, coaching support and all the resources we need to provide a quality program and represent the City of Seaside. So on behalf of our organization, just want to thank all of you for the continued support. And we'll try to win as many games as we can. Even though it's not about winning, we'll do our best out there. So I also brought a bag here, and it can get sometimes cold at some of our games. So there's some pullovers here. I try to do my best to pick sizes, you know, that I could. But when you come to a game, if I didn't have the right size, I'll always exchange it for you. So it's a little, just thank you on behalf of our organization, Bun and Claudia Washington, who are the main people behind our organization. But yeah, thank you again on behalf of our organization. So appreciate it.
Diane Nielsen, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is Diane Nielsen. I want, because I couldn't get to my microphone or my hand on my Zoom, I couldn't raise it fast enough to ask about one of the consent agenda items, which is H. I'm just curious what Placer AI software is. And that, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello? Good evening, City Council. I'm Christopher Folliachi. I'm a resident of Seaside, and I'm also a student of Seaside High School. I'm here as a student to thank you all for supporting us and on behalf of the school, too. I'm, I'm sure they would say thank you to you all, and I'm also a leadership student, so thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. What is the will of the council?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
There's a probably move to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May has the same right. Abstentions, ayes have a motion carried unanimously. Let's go to eight. H, adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a licensing agreement with Placer AI for software subscription in the amount of $27,250, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for this item. I'm going to call on Assistant City Manager Dan Milas.
Good evening again. Before I get started, I just want to see, was there any specific questions in regards to the subscription or the, the data for the reason why it was polled? If I can answer.
House Member Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the caller, I think, kind of summed it up and asking for an explanation of what this is, how it's going to help our city. I read the staff report, but how exactly does it work? What exactly are we investing in? The details would, I would appreciate the details.
Perfect. So Placer AI is, it's an AI company that uses cellular data so we can track user insights and inputs. It's a tool that use, most cities use through economic development, as we're, we're trying to track and see where individuals shop on a daily basis, where they're coming from, where they're leaving their residence, where they're going, where they're, they're eating, their, what events they're going to. We're going to be able to see real-time data on how many people show up to each one of our events. When they leave our event, where are they going? Are they shopping or coming to a restaurant in Seaside, or are they going to another restaurant somewhere else? There, it will help with business recruitment and retention strategies when we're looking at those businesses we want to get here in Seaside. If we see that they're local businesses in other cities that are, our residents are going to, we can see how do we get one of those businesses here in our town. Performance tracking for commercial corridors, tourism and event analysis, as I mentioned. It will help us with grant applications when we, or when we need real demographic data, when we're applying for grants, we can give them the data and pull it from this, this software subscription that we have here. It will help us understand, and it's real-time data that we can get. So I, I know that the city manager does have experience using this company from where he came from. I've been researching them for a few years now, so I'm really excited to put them to work if we can get this contract underway, because I really think it'll help the city in a variety of different avenues.
Just on that, was there any discussion over privacy issues? Or is that, is this all agreed upon with the cellular provider or?
There, there is no privacy issues with this. It's just pulling like the cell, it's not having any information that's tracked. It's just if my cellphone, the beacon in it, it's like UPS data and geofencing. So you set up, you set up the fence where you want it to go, and it will tell you who's coming in, where they're coming from. If you remember from last year, when I brought some data from, from Exotics, I was able to tell the council how many people attended Exotics, how many, you know, what the percentages were from Seaside residents and from outside. So there's a lot of good data that we can use from this information.
And I'll just add on to that. So this is location data that's on your phone when you have the location analysis button on your phone. So this, this data from all of our cellphones is being sold to numerous companies, and it's very high level. It's not specific on the individual user. But municipalities are using Placer AI specifically in economic development to attract national retailers. So those national retailers know exactly how many, how many cars they need in front of their business, what, what demographics they're aiming for. And so this populates that in real time and allows cities to be more strategic with their economic development efforts. And as Dan referenced also, there's a variety of other features for, or uses for municipalities for parks and rec events who we're advertising to, and there's even some law enforcement applications. So it's, it's great data to have for a variety of municipal functions.
Thank you for the explanation and hearing more about it. I'm surely more excited to use it and surely support this item. Thank you very much for the explanation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And just, just to be clear, the, the privacy is not a concern because this information is already out there. It's floating around, people are buying it all the time, and so we're just buying it for our benefit in a sense. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Right? So it's not a special request. We don't know it's Dan Mullis's phone, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. But it's out there already. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, I guess, okay, I'm gonna take it out to the public. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. So this is borderline privacy. The information that is being sold does not target individual folks, but they do have that information. So that capacity is there. There's actually legislation right now where car companies were selling this without the consumer knowing. And so I want to preference that, that there is litigation out there due to this type of information being sold out and the consumer not knowing. My second comment on this is if you turn your location off, you will not be part of that. But depending on where they're getting the information and who they're contracting against, that could be susceptible to your information being sold. My question is with regards to the company that we're using, is there any accolades or any information as far as past municipalities that are nearby that have used this vendor? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Linda Cunningham, member of the homeless committee, but speaking as a private citizen. I, I grateful that we have picked a company and that we're starting on this path. I, you cannot like AI, but you can't stop it. And we have to learn how to use it. And I can guarantee Targets using this software, Safeways using this software, every large business is using this software and for their own personal needs. And I think it's great that CCI is looking to use this software. Again, the data is anonymized, nobody knows who these people are, they just know it's a phone. There's one phone, two phones, maybe they know some demographics about it, but they don't know who you are in any way, shape or form. You can always leave your phone at home and you can always, you know, you can turn off the location feature. And I'm just really grateful that, once again, Seaside's looking forward and stepping into the future. Thank you, guys. I hope you vote for this.
Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dials, city manager, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
Okay, city manager, do you want to? I heard a couple accusations about privacy. Let's, let's, can we dispense with that? Can you speak to that issue about, is this, you know, someone said something about borderline privacy? I mean, just bring it back to, you know, the realm of what this really is.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. As I understand the way this firm aggregates data, there are no privacy concerns because it's at such a high level. It doesn't identify any specific user, any specific phone number, any specific, anything that would identify anybody specific. It's really just a very, very high-level mechanism that tracks your cellphones that have their location tracking on. That's the way I understand, and given such, there is no privacy concern at this time.
Well, so you just, you just messed it up, you said at this time. I mean, we're not, we're not looking to buy that information, they're not looking to sell that information. That is not what this is about. Is that true or not?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, I mean, it just, it just, you know, we're taking a step into the future and we don't need to be acting as though we don't know what we're doing, and this has nothing to do with violating anybody's privacy. This is, so I'm going to speak to the commonality of, of this, and then we'll move forward.
Yeah, Placer AI is a widely-used software in economic development. It's featured in numerous economic development conferences, including the largest conference at ICSC in Las Vegas each year. I don't, I'm not specific on what municipalities are using in California, but in the Midwest, it was extremely prevalent. And again, it's used by, it's the data that speaks to what national retailers and other firms are looking for when they locate businesses in your community. If you have that data, you are a step ahead in economic development.
Hundreds of clients.
Hundreds of clients, correct.
All right, bringing it back to the dials, what is the will of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been probably moved to second. I want to question, all those in favor, use the regular sign of voting, which is aye.
Aye.
May has the same right. Abstentions, ayes have it, motion carried unanimously. Item number K, adopt a resolution increasing the cement contractors agreement by $300,000 to a total not to exceed $1,447,000. to a total of not exceed $1,447,000. Uh, ninety-nine hundred dollars and forty-seven. I don't know what's going on right now. It's hot in here. $1,147,947.50 for the police department parking lot improvements and authorize a $300,000 transfer from the capital reserves. Let's go to, I believe, Councilmember Garcia Zola for this one. Any particular questions, sir?
Thank you. I, I do. If I'm not mistaken, we had a hundred thousand dollar contingency for this project. And we are now over, or we need an extra $300,000. Can we just explain, I, I think for transparency purposes, why this is happening? And this is just something that I'm very strict about when we do set aside contingency funds that to make, that's why we ask beforehand. So if you could just explain a little bit.
Hold on. Did you have any questions?
Well, I, that was certainly one of my questions. I appreciated that question from my, my colleague. But also was curious to know, we have Teslas, so do we have chargers there? Is that included in this? But that, that's my main question was what my colleague asked.
Okay, anyone else that we've seen measure can answer as fully as possible.
One more question to follow up that, and I know that in the staff report, it said, I just wanted to know the fiscal impact to this, just for the community's well being as well, just to let them know, if we could.
See the mayor? Yeah, I'd like to ask Thomas Corbin, our public works director, to come down and answer some of these questions for us, especially specifically about the, the need for the change order specifically and the contingency. And may need Jessica Riley, our finance director, to speak to the financial side of that as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Yes, please. Yes, we actually have prepared a presentation. We have actually prepared a presentation in advance of some of these questions. So of course, this is the item. I'll just a little bit of background review and then we'll kind of get to the details of it. So the construction started on July 17th. We began with site grading activities in the lower parking lot adjacent to City Hall. During that procedure and during those operations, we encountered some unforeseen conditions. Scraping off, it was very wet, very unstable. What things, a couple of things that contributed to this was the high groundwater table, the clay, which is not really suitable for a parking lot. They were found in the lower parking lot. And so the native material underneath that existing pavement basically needed to be off hauled. So we'll get the next slide here. So we went to our geotechnical engineer. They made some recommendations, corrective measures of what we can do to stabilize the subgrade. Obviously, we want this parking lot to be there a long time. It already has existed there a long time. But we did see evidence of it settling in different portions and I'll, I'll show some pictures for that. So this includes basically a pavement, placement of a base rock, a gabion rock, and then the HME, the hot mix asphalt pavement that will go on top of it. So the 650 tons of native material will be removed and off hauled. And then additional materials imported and that will stabilize the site before the construction of the pavement section basically working upward. We also found damage to the existing storm drain. We found damage to the existing gas line. It was corroded coming into the building. So those three things, when added up, when we were working with our contractor, basically exceeded our contingency amount. So this was some of the conditions that we actually found here. So I've kind of listed there and kind of itemized them. You see the storm drain. We found that the, the storm drain system, the parking lot did not actually flow correctly. We had a lot of broken pipes in there, cracked tile pipe. We had damaged the existing electrical conduit as well. And that was contributed to basically the high groundwater table. There is a sump pump that pumps it out, but then with the damage to the storm drain pipe, we were kind of, it kind of goes in a circular. So it defeats the purpose. Here's a couple, another, as I mentioned, the sump pump, but a couple additional photos of the existing soil. So, so that basically black and gray clay material was never off hauled in the existing construction. They just kind of built on top of that, filled it in, and that's where we had the, the issues. Actually, so this is the current state. Well, actually now the subbase has been put on, but that's the gabion rock being brought in. So that was used to stabilize and bring down the new drainage and the storm drain pipes that have been installed. Actually, today already, the gas line has been removed and replaced. Brand new gas line pipe has been installed to City Hall. Just in case that question comes up about who owns the gas line, everything behind the meter belongs to the city as a private owner. Everything on the other side is PG&E. So we're, we're only doing work within our scope. This is a, pictures of some of the existing utilities that were in there. So this is a summary of the additional repair. So this is the reconstruction of the storm drain system in the parking lot, using of course, modern pipe materials, removing and replacing the gas line, which I had mentioned. The 650 tons of off haul of the unsuitable material. The import of the gabion rock, which is, we saw in the last picture, that will be used to basically stabilize the site. And then the placement of the geotechnical soil stabilization. That's a basically a fabric that goes on top and then the aggregate base. And then we build basically our hot mix asphalt on top of that. So the extra work, when summed up, was the, this is, we'll answer some of the questions about the cost, is $312,831. So that exceeds the contingency that we had in there originally. And so this is a summary of that, the current, or the existing contract, the current contract was the $1,047,923.50. The contingency that was left in there was $100,024. The cost of the repairs as they stand now, and basically that's where they'll stand as far as this scope of the work. $312,831. So the contingency exceedance is the $212,807. So the requested funding is $300,000, which comes from basically that reserves to cover that and to balance out in case there's any other unforeseen conditions or any other improvements that need to be made. It leaves us still with a cushion to finish the project. So that leads us with the last slide of basically the recommendation to approve this with the additional funds coming from the capital reserve.
Thank you. So you mentioned clay like soils. Did we not know about this before?
So some soil investigation was done. From my understanding, you know, the project was designed, I guess, a few, a few months ago, leading back almost about a year. I think they did some probing in there. They knew that there was the potential for that. So they already had some type of a fix in there, but couldn't actually design it and didn't, didn't know how deep it actually existed. So had that then been done, we could have bid it as an alternate, you know, design, but it still would have been kind of hazy until you peel off the, the entire surface. We didn't know how that deep that ran.
When you say they knew, who are you referring to?
So typically in the design, they'll do some probing and some, do some soil investigation. And so I, my understanding is some of that was done in some of the locations throughout the parking lot, but it wasn't done basically deep enough to know how extensive the, the clay was, the clay layer in there.
By who?
By the geotechnical engineer.
Gotcha.
And the, the project designer, yes.
Do we foresee this to be an ongoing issue throughout the city, like?
No, no, it's particularly in this location because it's so low to the water table. And, you know, obviously we have the lakes nearby, but being that the slope of the PD parking lot goes down and we essentially have a basement, that's where it's basically meeting that. So it was designed with the intent, it more or less basically floats, if you will. And there's, there was already existing sump pump built into the system when the city hall was originally built and that parking lot was already built. So there was some knowledge of that. It's, it's unfortunate because what we think is that probably some of that was, you know, filled in. They tried to correct the problem, but just over the years with the water table moving up and down, basically oversaturated that area. And that's where we found damage to the existing storm drain. That's why the gas line is, was pretty corroded. I, I actually look at this as kind of like fortunate that we discovered these problems now and can correct them now. But unfortunately, it's, it's costing us, it wouldn't cost anymore, but we're having to borrow from the capital reserves. That, that's probably unfortunate, unfortunate part about it.
And are these materials that are going to be imported that would potentially stabilize, is that a long-term fix or just like a?
That is a long-term fix, yes. Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Permanent fix, that's, that's, that's correct, yeah.
And then when you say that this is supposed to be an S, that the 300,000 that you're requesting, it would be estimated to help fulfill the project?
Yeah, the, the estimated cost of repairs is the price that has been negotiated with the contractor for those repairs. So that is fixed. And so we say estimated, just in case, you know, there's something else that's encountered. By now, we, we basically encountered everything. So I can kind of rest assured that that $312,831 is fixed for that component of the work.
Perfect. And then I had a follow-up question, which I mentioned, which was the fiscal impact.
Yeah, this, Jesse, this is a, I called Jessica Riley, our finance director, to answer that question.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a brief recap of the current adopted budget per fiscal year 2526. We achieved a modest operating surplus for the year ahead of $48,000. That means that our expected revenue for the coming year and our expect, is expected to exceed our expenditures by $48,000. After a study session where we made a lot of strategic decisions, we fully funded our required reserves that are required per resolution. That includes 5% of our expenditures for the capital reserves. After meeting our rainy day reserves, we were left with a unassigned fund balance, which is kind of like our savings that are available for any budget amendments during the course of the year of $317,000. So when we were faced with this contingent unexpected cost of $300,000, it would have fit within our unassigned fund balance that we have available, our, our savings, but it would have exhausted it and very early in the, the current year. So this is an allowable expense if the council approves and an allowable use of the capital reserves, which are currently at $2.4 million.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we go to slide eight? And I'll go back to Thomas.
Yes.
So out of these items, one, two, three, four, five, out of these items, what is the bulk of the 312? I'm having a hard time with 312 on these items.
The bulk is the off haul of the 650 tons of native unsuitable material. And then with that is the import to make up the difference is the gabion rock. It's just so heavy and it's basically granite. It's, it's brought in and so that's the bulk of it.
How many truckloads? It's okay.
Well, each, each, each truck is 20, basically 26 cubic yards. Depending on the density, I have to back and calculate those. I could do that for you, but yeah.
Trying to understand, I mean, this, the price tag here. And so, and where does it haul it to?
Those rocks are, I think they're coming from a quarry up near Watsonville. Most of that, that, that material comes from that, where they blast it and granite rock.
We're taking out of there.
That goes to fill, that goes to fill, yeah.
And so in your professional opinion, this price tag seems.
It's appropriate.
Negotiated that they wanted more or?
Of, of course, yeah. Of course, we, we, we work, we, we've been working with them on the price to, to get it to reasonable, where we could have a meeting of the minds and a consensus, yes.
And we feel this is the right.
This is the right solution, yes.
Thank you for all your answers.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, I thought, I thought you asked a good question about where does it go to?
Yes.
Now, just where do they take it and drop it off to the best you know it, you know, what they use it for, we can care less. But where do you think they take it to?
So this goes to just basically a fill site, so it can go to any basically landfill.
Right, or, or somewhere where they think someone else can use that type of material.
Correct, correct. This, this particular material is just going to a landfill because it's really not suitable to build on any other site. So it wouldn't be typically a site where we say, hey, clean, clean, fill, free. You know, sometimes you see that on the sites of sites. This is, this is not appropriate for that, yeah. Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. City Manager, did you have any comments? You know, I, I thought it was a good comment, comment about how long this is supposed to last, right? Because it, you know, when they built, I forget exactly when they built this building, 56 or something like that, right? But when they, when was it, Dave?
Sixty-six.
Yeah, sixty. But my point is, you know, for those that may not understand the layout of this, that parking lot is below the grade of the street of Canyon Del Ray. And so it's about the same level as the water across in, in the, in Laguna Grande. But this fix, and when I say permanent, yeah, 35 years from now, 40 years from now, they may have to. But that's where we're trying to get to, right?
Correct. This is a permanent fix. And, and again, that the cost estimate is appropriate with what that permanent fix would, would take for this rock material.
I thank you. Bring it back to the council. What is the will of the council? Approve Kay. I think that was Councilmember Garcia Zola with the motion and Mayor Pro Tem with the second. Your party moved in second. I want to question, all those in favor, use the regular sign of aye. Did I go to the public? I don't think it did. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city attorney and city manager, Bobby Maxwell, Concerned Citizen. I just have a question. Are we certain that these soils that are being removed are safe? Have they been tested for any toxins? Because that is the parking area and you have vehicles that leak fluids such as oil, gas, transmission fluid, things like that. And it's been close to 60 years of that. So it is possible that those fluids leak down into that, that soil. And I just want to make sure that our city is not liable for sending it to an off-site facility that can possibly sue us for damages for it being unsafe. So, thank you.
Elena, Elena Mathikias, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Oh, hi. I live in Seaside over on Kimball. And I was at National Night Out on Tuesday and I asked a guy from Public Works if the city could put speed bumps between the condos that are here at Pacific Heights and going down as you're, and you go between here and Hillby and Schaefer. And the road is Kimball, right? I think people speed like they're crazy. Is there any way that the city could put speed bumps or like anything to get people to slow down?
Thank you for your comments. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
My only question with regards to this is when the police department's headquarters flooded, was there any indication then or was there any testing done then? Because it happened a some time ago. And so when that happened, was anything inside or around the perimeter checked? So that we would have had indication? I understand that we didn't know the depth of it, but since we had an indication that there was clay there and that it was used in the past, there weren't records of past, I guess, upgrades that we've done that could have given us a better idea of the cost that we would be inquiring now. And also, I don't know if I heard this incorrectly, so please correct me if I'm wrong. Are we going into our reserves in order to pay for this? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
I think your public comment is closed. City manager, you can answer any of those questions.
Yeah, the ED sewer backup occurred prior to exposing the subgrade on this project. So there was not a way to to foresee that issue. I'll ask Thomas anything that the other questions that were asked as far as testing of the soil.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yes. So so to the comment of the testing. Yes, of course, the soil had to be tested, you know, just to know what its content was and what was in it. So as I stated, you know, it's it's not considered clean, dry fill that you would see that was suitable basically for building underneath a foundation. So that's why it was exported. As far as the contaminants go, is most of the contaminants that we see that leak, like if you have a vehicle on the street and it drips oil, that gets absorbed into the asphalt. So that grinding operation is actually separate. So the grindings from the asphalt are dealt with separately. And those can be used for basically recycled asphalt. And they take them back and they grind them. Or sometimes these basically they use them for road base or for farmers' fields. So as far as like we, it's not hazardous or anything that was off haul that is considered contamination. For instance, like what we dealt with on the campus, you know, town sites or anything that from former four org authority lands.
Thank you, Thomas. And then the final comment is that this is a this is owes through the capital reserve, which the fund exists for capital improvement projects for reserve, you know, funds that are needed for overages and making those projects complete.
I have one more question for, I guess, our engineer. How how far down was this clay? I mean, you know, we it's a I think the council asked great questions, right? But I'm trying to get you, you know, how far did you have to go down before you realized the clay and the thickness of the clay, you know, what they did in 66? It didn't it didn't hold up, right? So let's how far down could you?
I think this went 18 to 24 inches. Now, not all of it was removed because when we worked with the geotechnical engineer, they said, you know, if you put in basically this layer of Gabian rock, that will work as a float or in a stabilization. So it's not like you have to keep going down and down till it's all removed.
About 24, 18 inches. Right. I I just want to get to this. As engineers.
Yes.
You know, you guys, you guys did the work. This is what you recommended.
Right.
Great questions about the cost of the cost overruns. But it's it's hard for me to imagine, you know, trying to second guess the engineers about, you know, should you have went down farther? Did you go down farther enough? And that's hard to do. This is the recommendation from the city manager about fixing this parking lot. And they came up with problems and either we fix it or we don't. So it's been probably moved to second by the council. Are there any other questions? All those in favor, use red sign voting, which is I.
I.
Now, he's had the same right. Abstentions. Here now is eyes have emotion carrying. Let's go to a public hearing. Nine A adopt the ordinance to amend the title five and 17 of the Seaside Municipal Code to establish security requirements, operating standards and zoning requirements for the storage or sale of firearms and ammunition. The proposed ordinance is not subject to CEQA pursuant to section 150 61B3 of the CEQA guidelines. This is the second reading of this ordinance and it will be a roll call vote. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for this item. We're going to call on Andrew Myrick, our housing and housing and planning manager.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, City Council. As this is a second reading and all of the all of this information will be stuff you've heard before, I'll move through it quickly. So just as a reminder, the current situation is municipal code retreats the sale of firearms and ammunition as a general retail use, which allows it to be a permitted use in most of the commercial parts of the city. On March 20, council directed staff to review all appropriate locations within the city for the sale of firearms and ammunition. And so this proposed ordinance would provide additional regulations for those types of businesses. It would amend Title V to address issues related to operational security requirements, with the primary goal being prevention of the theft of firearms. And the police chief would be responsible for evaluating properties and determining if a license would be appropriate. It also modifies Title 17 to specify appropriate locations by it requires a use permit, limits locations to only the southwest portion of the city and limits it to the CC and CRG zoning districts and requires minimum setbacks from certain sensitive uses. So this is just a map again of what part of the city would be allowed in. It would not be allowed in the red area, which is anything east of Noche Buena and north of San Pablo. The buffers would need to be provided from parks, schools and licensed childcare centers and preschools. And it would be a 1,000 foot buffer around those uses. And so this map would show the areas where it could be considered, and that would essentially be the colored areas that are outside of those green circles. So mostly along the north part of Fremont and the south part of Fremont, south of San Pablo. So staff's recommendation is that the council approved, I'm sorry, adopt the proposed ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Any questions? We'll take it out to public comment. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Public comment remains open.
Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
I I'll go one more time. Public comment remains open for the third time.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. No members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bring it back to the dice. What is the will of the
Just have one comment, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Huh?
I just have one comment.
Well, you you had to wait on the question now.
There's a motion to prove nine A second.
Has been probably moved and seconded on the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And since I've been on this council, I have noticed that the bulk of when we change our code is the discussion is on the first read. And I appreciate the the summary from tonight, but I was not here at the first read at the last meeting in July. So on this vote, because I was not here at present, did not hear the arguments originally. And I watched it on Zoom, but I was not in the room. And so at this time, I'll be abstaining on this vote for those reasons, although I do support this and do support that we add our and change our codes. I'm concerned about a couple of the sections in there, but I stick to my vote of abstaining, and I'm only abstaining because I was not here to hear the original arguments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thank you so much. Are you saying you want to hear the full report?
No.
No, okay, okay. It's a roll call vote.
Counsel and agency member Miller.
Abstain.
Counsel and agency member Burks.
I.
Counsel and agency member Garcia Arizona.
I.
Mayor Potem and Vice Chair Pacheco.
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Hi.
Your motion passes four with one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to item number nine B, adopt the ordinance to amend the Seaside Municipal Code adding chapter 9.05 prohibiting excessive solicitation in the city, streets, medians and other places and amending chapter 9.20 overnight occupancy of vehicles on public property, 9.21 store to personal property on city property and 10.32 stopping, standing, parking. The proposed ordinance amendment is not subject to California Environmental Quality Act CEQA pursuant to section 15061B3 of the CEQA guidelines. This is the first reading. It will be a roll call vote on Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for this item. More to start with Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening again, honorable mayor, members of city council, Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager. And we are going to have a short presentation on some proposed amendments to a couple of different ordinances. We're going to be looking at chapters 9.05, 9.20 and 9.21, as well as 10.32 with some proposed amendments. So why does this matters to to the city? These are these amendments are going to promote public health and safety, ensure accessible, safe public spaces for all of our residents. They do still protect our constitutional rights and it responds to the community concerns regarding unsafe or aggressive solicitation, the accumulation of personal property and overnight vehicle occupancy. So the new chapter we are requesting is 9.05 for aggressive solicitation. And this prohibits unsafe and aggressive solicitation in key public spaces, which include the medians, traffic lanes, near financial institutions, driveways and after dark. It does protect free speech rights with time and place and manner restrictions. And it supports our ongoing support for pedestrian, traffic and commercial safety. Chapter 9.20 overnight vehicle occupancy, we're just cleaning this up a little bit. Right now, we're proposing changing the time that you cannot be in your vehicle on public property from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And the current coded is from 10:00 PM to nine or in the current code is 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. That's a typo on there. We're just changing the one hour from nine from 10 to 9:00 PM. And then it aligns with the state legal standards as well as our neighboring communities. So when we look at chapter 9.21, we have some new definitions. It identifies unattended versus abandoned property, which is more clearly clarified. And it defines the trash and debris and bulky items. It outlines what is considered excessive or unlawful storage. And then some and it does say state the essential items for survival and protected, which we do protect unless unsafe. Those items tend to be driver's license, social security cards, other, you know, smaller, smaller items that can be kept on one's person. 9.21, the the storage enforcement, it prohibits storage that blocks ADA access with entrances. So we those are, you know, people that are big bulky items on a lot of storefronts getting in the in and out. Enables a cleanup of public property with our notice. We kind of we are noticing a 72 hours right now. And we're going, I think, to 48 hours is is what the new regulations require or allow. Outlines notice empowerment and disposal procedures and health and safety risks can also admit it, trigger immediate removal where we notices isn't required. When we 10.32 in the parking amendments, right now, we currently have a four hour fixed limit at three at our three parks, Catino Park, Laguna Grande and Roberts Lake. The new regulations will allow for the city manager to authorize set times for these for any public facility. So depending on times and situations, if we see that there are issues at one park over another, it can change from four hours to two hours. It could be really up to the discretion of the city manager to try and curb some of the instances where we have with the extended parking times. So some of the next steps, if adopted, we're going to train the staff on the enforcement and notification requirements that have been updated. We'll coordinate with outreach teams and service providers, and then we'll install updated signage and regulated areas. And we'll put out public awareness campaigns and communications just to make sure the community is aware of our new adopted ordinances. So in summary, reduces unsafe and aggressive solicitation, clarifies rules for storage and overnight occupancy, maintains constitutional protections and improves the quality of life and safety for all residents. So the recommendation is to introduce the ordinance, waive the full reading and read by title only and set the ordinance for adoption at the next regular city council meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Council member Garcia Zola, the council member Miller.
Thank you. When we're talking about aggressive or unsafe solicitation, what do we mean by that? How are we defining that?
So those individuals that are continuously coming up to to people with the constant begging, you know, it's not necessarily those that are sitting there with a sign. It's, you know, being a little bit more aggressive.
I have the language here. If you want me to read that for you, it will help. Aggressive and intrusive solicitation may include approaching or following pedestrians using abusive language, making unwanted physical contact or blocking pedestrian vehicle traffic. So specifically.
Um, and for we're saying we are training staff on enforcement and notice requiring, who is staff?
Celebrity Public Works.
Okay, let's let's define that a little bit better. Outreach teams who coordinate with outreach teams and service providers. Who are the outreach teams?
Would be family community support program.
And launch public awareness and communications campaign. How and how and when would these be launched?
So we'll work closely with the city clerk's office to develop a plan and push it out as frequent as necessary.
Thank you.
Jumping, he asked you about who would be doing enforcement. You said something about public works?
The enforcement, he asked me about the training. Who would we be training?
Okay, and it's just public works, no one else?
Public works, PD would would get some of that training too, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, is there a certain area of this city that we see more aggressive solicitation than other areas?
From my experience, I would say that they are more on the entrances into the cities. Coming up on Fremont tends to be a little bit more prolific, if you will, where I'm seeing it. There could be some other areas that I'm not aware of, but I am seeing it generally on Fremont on either end of the city limits.
You know, I've seen some communities that have worn warning signs there, no aggressive solicitation. Some cities say no solicitation there. Has the city considered putting up, if we adopt this ordinance, some sort of sign that says we do not allow aggressive solicitation there?
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that.
I'm not saying I'm not saying to do it or not. I'm just saying, have we thought about it?
It's been it's been part of the discussion and whether or not we, you know, move forward with that, that's still up for, you know, once this ordinance gets passed.
Very good. And in regards to the parking time that the city manager would have the authorization to change the time. And we so in in the hypothetical that we go put up signs and we would put up signs, I presume. And then the city manager then changes, you know, maybe not the city manager, but future city managers or whatnot, change the time and then we're, you know, replacing signs all the time. Not all the time, but we're taking down the signs and replacing them. That's not, how do we get around that?
I mean, that is a possibility. I think these are some situations that we would see that some some parks or areas tend to have visitors that frequent them longer than others. So we want to kind of address those concerns, but we also wanted to give the city manager the autonomy to address them as they came up, so we didn't have to constantly come back. to address them as they came up, so we didn't have to constantly come back, um, and change the ordinance, um, for specific locations. So right now, the four-hour parking works well in a lot of areas. There is, you know, a couple of specific areas that I think we need to look at, um, to try and get that down.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor Potem.
Yeah, on the forty-eight hours notice, uh, related to, I forget where, but you said it was seventy-two hours, and we reduce it to forty-eight hours.
I, I did make a mistake. I'd say that seventy-two hours for the, for the tagging.
So it's not.
It's not.
So it's being.
It's, it's in line with the, the model ordinance governor has released at seventy-two hours.
Oh, okay, so nothing's being reduced. So just out of curiosity, legally, can we reduce it? Because if someone doesn't, my concern, it cannot be, cannot reduce it. Is that a true statement? It has to be seventy-two hours.
That's currently, yes. I believe it will defer to the city attorney for that.
And you're, so, not where you, where you, no, it's a good question, but where are you asking seventy-two hours for, on the street? For.
The tagging.
For the tagging of.
Okay.
Of, uh, let's say, a wide range of things that are out there that are negatively, some people would consider negatively impacting the businesses, et cetera. City Attorney, did you want to answer?
Uh, thank you for that question, Mayor Potem, members of the council, members of the public. Seventy-two hours is, um, the most legally defensible hours. Could we reduce it? Yes, we might be able to reduce it. However, we're more subject to potential litigation. The shorter time, we took the best of, uh, we did shorten the time of storage of the property. Um, so it went from ninety days down to sixty days.
Okay, so. So just for clarity, so let's say it takes, sometimes it takes a day for staff to be notified. I'm sorry, sometimes it takes a day or two days to be cited for whatever reasons. So once I get that citation, the person, I, excuse me, has three days to vacate that area. Is that a true statement?
It's not when the individual receives the citation, so the notice, the notice goes on the items. So if there's free shopping carts and it gets noticed, it's seventy-two hours from the time that notice gets placed on that item.
Which is three days.
Yeah.
And then we're doing this, there's a lot of good things, I think, uh, as far as for safety issues. My concern is when we sometimes create ordinance, it's hard to, the consistency in enforcement is vital to success of the program. The police department or, or, or Public Works, or whoever the leadership is in this, are we convinced that we can better monitor, enforce the laws as written?
Yes, I, I do believe we can. Um, they've been doing well with the, the tagging that it has been is, you know, over the years since we, um, started it. Um, there are some tweaks that can be made, and I think that this is giving the staff more tools in their toolbox to be able to handle that.
Through the mayor. I'm sorry, I was going to add to that.
Yeah, that, that was it.
And I just wanted to add to that, that the city attorney recently completed training for both PD and Public Works, and, uh, if this ordinance is adopted, we'll go through that training once again with the new, uh, with the new ordinance in hand.
Uh, anyone else? I had a couple of questions. When we get to the seventy-two hour tagging, that's not new, is it?
No.
Okay, I'm just, it's just, somehow we got into, and I'm not faulting anyone, I'm just saying somehow we allowed that to talk as though that's new. And we need to be telling the public, that's not new. Okay, I guess you, I guess we're committing to doing a better job. Is that what you're saying?
Sometimes it doesn't happen, I think, as frequent as we would like it to. But we have been doing it for three years.
The, but I know, I'm just saying, the ordinance, the standard's been seventy-two. So I'm really trying to understand what this is about, and what is the new thing so public can understand what we're trying to do, right? I hear it all the time about people standing in the medians. And so when, when, I think it was Councilmember Garcia, it was, oh, talk to you about it, about aggressiveness and this and that. You said, well, I'm not, I'm not sure that, as long as the person is not, uh, banging up against the car, as long as they're not, uh, bothering you, then it seemed to be okay. Because I seen a guy, don't make a difference, man, if you know, I seen a person sitting down in the medium blowing bubbles. And everybody that drove by on that little medium on Fremont had to be afraid of them going one way or the other into traffic. So this is not about, you know, just, um, stopping someone, asking for some money so they can get something to eat. I, we all understand that. But at a certain point, this is about the health and safety of this community and the residents of this community. So that, I want to highlight what we're doing to improve the lives, to include how are we going to, um, uh, help these individuals uh, get to the services that the county is providing, that is providing in this community, that is provided on this peninsula. That's, that's really what I want to highlight. That's what I'm trying to get to is, is something along those lines of, you know? Uh, and then we talked about in the parks, we just had two people, uh, community members earlier talk about how it's hard to find parking in the parks in this parking lot because people are parking in these, uh, areas extended amount of time. We're talking about hours. And, and we understand some of the situation, but our community is saying fix these things. And so I don't see it as though, you know, it's, it's one or the other. I don't see, uh, how, um, we're trying to balance the person's ability to stay on public property as long as they want. Now, the law says you can lay down, you get your sleep, and, you know, things like that. We understand that. But when you go through Catino Park, that, that, I think the parking lot only, only has about, what is it, you know?
Eleven.
Well, see, I was going to say sixteen, right, but it's eleven. Parking slots. And if you are parking work trucks in there, how, where am I parking at? Where's someone parking that dropping off their kids to play on those new swing sets and those, and those merry, and merry-go-round? And so I'm looking, that's where my support is trying to go, is how do we protect the rights of all residents to be able to frequent and enjoy these public spaces to include the parks by the water and other places in this, in this community? And so, uh, City Manager, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, this ordinance is trying to accomplish just, just those things. We hear frequent, uh, volume of the, uh, pain handling in the right of way, the unsafeness for the individual uh, and the associated traffic, and then we're also experiencing significant issues in, in several parks that are limited with public spaces, and how we address these challenges, uh, fairly and accurately. These, this ordinance provides the tools for PD and, and Public Works to address those.
And, and I would, I just want, if I can, I, I would just say, and speak, I think this order speaks to our staff actually trying to assist the people that need it, not just, you know, because it's not about punishment. This is not punishment. But I'm saying, in this ordinance, it also talks to putting some, um, uh, uh, so-called man-hours behind how do we help people find the resources that are in this county and on this peninsula?
Correct, Mayor. This, this gives us another opportunity, another touch point, uh, to work with those individuals and direct them to the services.
Uh, Mayor Potem.
Just a couple of little more questions. One to clarify, when I thought I heard Mr. Muse said forty-eight hours, that's why I referred to the forty-eight hours. I did think it was seventy-two. Just for my clarity, um, at the intersection of, uh, Canyon Del Rey, and they're on the medians, can they do that or not? Because some said aggressive and some said, but I didn't, the way I read it, I thought I read it, was you can't be on the medians for safety reasons.
If this ordinance is adopted and passed, the answer is they cannot be there.
So you could be at the meet, you cannot be on the medians, but you can be by Home Depot is okay.
It's in the right of way, so anywhere on the right of way, you will not be able to be.
Right. Oh, so even in Home Depot by the stoplight would not be okay?
That's not, yeah, that's, we don't own that, that section there anymore.
Okay, so medians are not okay. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia Arizona.
Thank you. To clarify, it's an unsafe and and aggressive behavior, right? So anything that is deemed unsafe and aggressive.
No.
Did that, no, that's what we're putting in the ordinance. It's unsafe and aggressive, yes.
Just.
So Mayor Potem.
Just to be real clear, so, yeah, so if I'm being passive and nice guy, collecting money, is it okay or not okay? Or does it have to be aggressive? Just, yes, like either yes or no. Can I be on the medium? Yes or no?
Not on the median, no.
Okay, just wanted to be real clear. Okay, I just want to.
Yeah.
Thanks. Well, you want, I was going to ask the city attorney to weigh in, but if you want to ask a question, maybe she'll roll that in too.
My only question is, can we remove the word aggressive? You can't be other than.
Okay, well, all right, that's, yeah, and you have, okay, go ahead, city attorney, just.
Yes, thank, thank you so much. No, this ordinance specifically with respect to solicitation, solicitation in median strips, intersections, and active public roadways is inherently hazardous and is prohibited. So that's that. And with respect to aggressive and intrusive, um, that language is in there specifically for some of the other areas of the city in order to, um, have the conduct and keep it as conduct-related as opposed to content-related. That's why the word aggressive is in there, so that it's not the person who is passively handing out flyers. It's the person who chases you down the street and hands you flyers. So there's definitions in this ordinance that specifically respond to what aggressive is, what solicitation is.
So, 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 so we're not, right, so we're not saying someone, I'm, I'm getting to a better example on aggressiveness. We're not saying someone on the sidewalk can't ask you for a dollar. We're saying they can't chase you down, they can't badge you, can't block you, can't, you know, put their hand up to stop you from going around. Of course, they can't touch you, right, but I'm just, just, you know, giving people, giving the public the example is we're not trying to infringe anybody's, uh, freedom of speech, so, so to speak, to ask for a couple of dollars to you. That's not what this is about.
Exactly. This has very, very carefully drafted definitions of what that aggressive is. It could mean intentional touching or causing physical contact. Somebody puts their hand out, touches you. It could be causing, uh, fear in a person. That is something that fear bodily harm to somebody else. Um, intentionally blocking a safe or free passageway, so you can't block a sidewalk, for example, as part of that. Um, just using sidewalk as an example of a public, uh, pedestrian or vehicle right-of-way area. So there are several other definitions in here, but the idea is to specifically define those as much as possible.
And those definitions are in the staff report.
They are in both, yes.
Yeah, and, and you're reading them from somewhere. I just want the public to understand, you're just not making this off the top of your head. It's written down somewhere, right?
Uh, yes, it is written down, and it's in the ordinance that is attached to the staff report.
Which the council has read, so, but we're asking good questions because what we're trying to make sure is that no one leaves here thinking that we're trying to stop people from asking for, um, something to help them, help make their life better, right? That's not what we're talking about here. Okay, all right, uh, let's, just had one more.
Yes, of course. I'm wondering if maybe I can ask a question of the police chief in regards to this. That's what I'm. Chief, thank you so much. Do you, do you see this, um, ordinance as something that we can, uh, that is sustainable? That is something that the police department can, um, I guess, manage properly, or how do you see this ordinance working for us?
I, I think this is very powerful. Um, I actually was part of the discussion early on of trying to get this moving forward because as it stands now, when somebody is on a center median in an unsafe manner, just by being there, our hands are tied. We have no legal authority to do anything. Unless they step off that center median into the street to collect something from a car, then we can, um, intervene at that point. But at this point, we have nothing. This allows us to keep our community safe. It gives us some tools when we're called to address some of these issues. And in terms of the aggression, um, that does happen. It happened at the police department in the last couple of weeks where we had to ask a gentleman to leave the police department because he was harassing people coming inside, being very aggressive, using vulgar language. Freedom of speech, we can't do much, but if you're trying to solicit, um, uh, money from somebody, that's going to create an issue. We have some authority at this point, so I'm, I'm very supportive of this ordinance.
Thank you. And in regards to the median, um, do you see this as, uh, a warning that you would remove the person from the median? Or do you see this as a ticketable offense, which I believe would then be in city ordinance, if I'm not mistaken? Uh, I guess the state law doesn't speak to this, if they're on our median, is, um, so, uh, how would the enforcement go? I guess it's my first part of the question, uh, and so.
I think just like we do everything else, if this is passed, ultimately, it will be education, trying to educate the people who are here of what the laws are, being fair, move into a warning if we have to give a warning, but ultimately citations. And really, the, the, the best answer is, it depends. We will use our discretion. Everybody's different. Their behavior, conduct is different, so we'll have to evaluate that on a case-by-case situation. But the intention is just to have some ability to stop the unsafe behavior and certainly not have people being aggressive with our residents.
And I'm totally in favor of that, and I, and I do appreciate this ordinance. Um, this is just my, my last concern is, or my last question is, if we approach somebody and tell them to remove, to move, and, and they move, and then they come back to the same location, and we're playing this cat, cat and mouse game uh, with the police department and, and using our resources for that. Um, uh, do you, do you anticipate that, uh, being a problem? Uh, or what, what's, what methods would we use to kind of make sure that the person is not hanging out there, coming back?
With this ordinance, we would actually have legal authority to take legal action. That could lead up to citations, could lead up to potentially arrests. It would give us some ability to do something beyond the cat and mouse game that currently exists and has forever is what we do today, is we go out, we politely ask people to leave. Most people will do so, and within ten, twenty, thirty minutes, they're back over there, and it's happening day in and day out. This gives us some authority to actually take some enforcement action.
Thank you very much for those answers, and sorry I didn't tell you in advance, but I.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, no problem. Thank you. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Uh, my first question is regards to public spaces, that this includes the library and in front of City Hall. As a concerned, committed resident for equity and dignity and public health, I respectfully oppose the current draft of the proposed ordinance due to its disproportionate and punitive impact on our unhoused community members. While public safety cleanliness is important, this ordinance does not address the root cause of homelessness, poverty, or the lack of shelter access. Instead, it criminalizes survival behaviors such as storing personal belongings or resting in a public space when no alternatives are made available. These changes, including the addition of vague definitions like trash, debris, and the expansion of inbound authority without meaningful safeguards, increases the risk of trauma, property loss, and displacement for the most vulnerable neighbors. The ordinance claims to create a safer and more accessible city, yet it does so by creating deeper exclusion for those already experiencing structural inequities. Equity requires that policies be implemented with an understanding of unequal starting points, not through enforcement that further penalizes those who lack housing. The sweeping powers to remove belongings, including items vital to health and safety like tents, clothing, or medical items, will cause irreversible harm and may expose the city to legal risk under Martin, Boyce, and ADA protections. I urge the city council to either reject or significantly revise this ordinance. Instead, I ask that the city prioritize real, real solutions, expand shelter options, volunteer storage programs, public restrooms and showers, and community-based outreach that upholds human dignity. We must remember that our public spaces are for everyone, and that housing, not punishment, is the answer to homelessness. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Elena Mathakias, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Oh, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I live off of Kimball, and I have to walk down the hillby and Schaefer every morning. Is there any way that the city can put speed buttons on Kimball because people race up and down that hill like they're freaking crazy? Because people race up and down that hill like they're freaking crazy.
Thank you for your comments. Diane Nielsen, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council again. I wanted to express my support for keeping people from staying on medians and asking for handouts, not because they're asking for handouts, but it's just such an extremely dangerous and distracting situation. And of course, those people will need, when they are offered money or whatever, food, they are going to have to step out into the street. They can't reach far enough over to, to safely accept food or money. And I appreciate that that is not going to happen anymore or is going to be alleviated. And I've called many, many times and it's, I definitely think this will make things safer when people are not allowed to spend time on the medians. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The caller ending in two, two, eight, seven, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Peter Kaiser and I think we have to be very careful. I didn't hear the whole presentation, but we have to be very careful about this because there, in the previous administration with the Attorney General Merritt Garland, he was actually going on purpose and sending law enforcement and arresting people who were praying quietly, even singing in front of abortion clinics. And sometimes these people were in their eighties and he was actually having them arrested and jailed and taken into court and put in jail for, I think it was actually for years. And sometimes the people from the clinics, abortion clinics would come out and bother these people. And then the, the, the people praying there were the ones who got arrested. So we have to be very careful because for the last four years till the last, till December, there was a great misuse of law enforcement on, and the FACE Act. So we have to be very careful on this. And in England, they even have punishment if you're praying silently in front of abortion clinic, you can actually, they were actually arresting people for that. They're criminalizing this freedom of assembly. So we have to, we have freedom of assembly in a proper manner with politeness and gentleness and love to protect the lives of the preborn babies in those clinics. So we have to make sure that's taken care of very carefully. And I'm sorry I missed the previous meeting. I was over at the prayer vigil. So we want to make sure, we hope we did, we didn't pass that very restrictive bill, ordinance for the second reading on almost restricting guns and ammunition stores out of the whole city, except for a few blocks on Fremont Street. We hope that didn't pass and I have been contacting city council members to follow John Lott's book. It's called, very good research around the United States. It's called More Guns, Less Crime. So the gun stores are not a hazard to health and safety. Guns in the hands of responsible citizens, that's why we don't speak the King's English and we're not part of the British Commonwealth because we had responsible citizens with the militia protecting this country. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no, the members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you. Got any more questions or comments? I, I did have one or two quick ones. Just to the city attorney, you know, it's, people keep talking about violating people's rights and all that. My understanding is when you read this, this is in compliance with the latest Supreme Court ruling and it's well within good law, right? I mean, we're not taking, are we taking anything away from anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that question and to everybody in the public and the city council. No, we're not taking anything from anybody. In fact, our existing ordinance is just being clarified to be consistent with the most recent case law of the Grants Pass case and also the Ninth Circuit cases regarding personal property. That's where some of those definitions are coming from is from the Kincaid, Garcia, and Levon case, which is current good law with respect to personal property. So it, it just adds an, an extra layer of clarification to ensure that everybody is clear on what our staff, public, everybody is clear on what is the definition of what types of property.
Okay, thank you. I just, I know you and the city manager and his team and the police chief worked on this and I, I just, you know, sometimes it's hard for me to, to listen and hear how people think that you guys would not do the right things and somehow you guys would actually put something illegal, you know, to, to the best of your knowledge, you know, on pieces of paper and ask the council to adopt it, right? So I come here thinking that you're going to do your job. It's legally sound, it's well thought out and it's for us to, you know, and the public to, to ask questions and punch holes into it, but to just assume that you guys would not be within legal bounds is just, it's hard for me to do that. So what is the will of the council if I haven't done that already?
I'll make a motion to approve nine B.
Second.
Then probably moved in second to approve nine B staff recommendation. This is the first reading and it's a roll call vote. Clerk will call a roll.
Council and agency member Miller.
Aye.
Council and agency member Burks.
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Sheriff Pacheco. Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item 10, business items, 10A, Fourth of July after action report, Mr. City Manager.
We'll have a Fourth of July after action report from Police Chief Nick Borges and Fire Chief Paul Blaha.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, members of the Seaside community. My name is Nick Borges. I am the police chief and I have the fire chief who will help get me through this report. I first want to start off by making a very important note, and that is in my, in nearly 23 years, I have never had a city attorney ride along with the police department and I want to give her some credit for riding with us majority of the evening and helping our officers and really getting to witness firsthand what we experience. In addition to that, in my time here, I have never had a city manager who drove around the city to the late hours of the night to observe and really take in everything. So I want to thank both the city manager and the city attorney for their leadership and support in this ongoing issue. I also want to, I would also like to just talk a little bit about some of the things we have done proactively to lead up to the Fourth of July. The city manager's office sent out letters proactively to previous locations and neighborhoods, which we got a lot of positive feedback from the community here in chambers in, in the past, and that was very helpful to get the message out that lighting off illegal fireworks is, is illegal and there was a consequence and a fine to that. That was very helpful. Another thing we did is we used our Flock sound detection system. And whenever there were booms leading up to the Fourth of July, and there were far less in, in data, in my, in my opinion, than there had been in previous years leading up to the Fourth. But even with that, the less number, we would send out letters to people in the whole neighborhood where these detective detections would go off to alert them that there's been activity to please report these things. There's consequences and kind of mirror what the city manager's message was in his letter. We really tried to push out a lot of information on social media. This is just some of the things I've captured here to demonstrate that. Putting out fireworks are illegal in a friendly but firm manner, reminding people that there is an ordinance of a 10:00 PM curfew. Last year, we allowed them to go until 11 because it was the first year. This year, we enforce the 10:00 PM curfew and the picture up in the top center is the actual Flock sound detection that are throughout our community, which coincide with our Flock cameras as well. Very powerful tool. And again, we, we went live and wanted the community to know we're going to go live as much as we could. We're all very busy, but we still tried to have some live updates on our social media to alert the community of activity that was happening. And of course, our drone program is growing and growing. This is probably one of our most effective tools that we use and one of our most effective tools that we use on the Fourth of July in particular. Why do we do this? Why does the city come together? Why does the police department put so much effort into this? First and foremost, it's illegal. There's a fire hazard. It's dangerous. People get hurt. There's property damage. There's debris throughout the community. Wildlife disruption. We hear about this each year, but I really want to emphasize the last two years in a row, and I saw it again, again this year, is right when the sun is going down and you look up in the sky, you're going to see birds that look like bats flying around when the booms start to go off. Those are not bats. Those are birds that don't typically fly at nighttime. I noticed it last year and I paid attention again this year. It's really sad to watch these birds just flying around and they'll go in one direction and a boom will go off and they'll fly in a complete different direction. You can see that they're in a panic. It's disrupting wildlife to a high level. Then we have people who suffer from PTSD, in particular, our military veterans. I'm not just saying that because I, I think that's what's happening. We hear from military vets who tell us these explosions are very harmful to them. It brings them back to places they don't want to relive. So we're a military community as well and this is happening. And this picture here demonstrates everything. This was sent to us on our hotline. This is a real seaside resident who said, here we go. We're going to get going here. We're starting to get late at night and this is how they, they have to live, putting this on their dog as these explosions are happening. So this affects people's pets with anxiety and stress. Here's a snapshot of our operation. We had 19 additional police, police officers. We had five additional firefighters. We had eight drone pilots and I want to go back one. You can actually put six on the additional staff or 20 for police because I had my 16 year old daughter who assisted in the police department with paperwork and administrative work. Eight drone pilots, eight drones that were deployed throughout the night. We had a command vehicle set up in the 1600 block of Yosemite. We had a second one at the Home Depot. We had record staff who answered 89 calls from our hotlines. We had dispatch center, they received 82 calls and I'll talk about some of the comparison in a moment. We issued those letters I talked about, just from the police department alone, we issued, mailed out 132 warning letters leading up to the Fourth. And something new that we implemented this year was AI streamlined reporting at no cost to anyone. This was created by Commander Doza in-house and was pushed out. And I'll show very briefly what this is without getting into specific detail of where we went, but this is a snapshot of what this is, this program. Every police officer, to include myself, this is actually my, my portal. You can access this from your work phone or a computer in the police car and you can in real time drive by location, contact somebody and fill out these drop boxes, date, time, location, and a brief, I mean, a very brief, like one sentence narrative to what you saw. And it will push out an entire AI report that we can review to make sure it's accurate and, and give you a report that's detailed so the city attorney later on can handle an appeal. In addition to that, it puts together a live map of every location that the police department, this is real, this is from that evening, right when it was getting kind of a little bit later in the evening. These are locations that police officers are already issuing citations and I'll show you a little bit later on, hotspots of how we're able to really use this AI feature in real time to allocate resources to areas that we need to. Here are some numbers here. These are calls for service and I'll start from the top here in 2023. And this is a combination of both calls to dispatch and hotline calls and text messages are included in the hotlines. 2023, we had 160 and 2024, we're up at 232 and that dropped down a little bit in 2025 to 171. And you'll see for dispatch calls, we had 82, as I referenced earlier. This year, last year, we had 92 and PD hotlines, we had 89 this year and last year we had 140, so that dropped a little bit there. We had our animal control who worked most of the evening and he was running around capturing dogs that were running away from homes. We actually saw one in, in the unit I was in, right, right when the firework went off and the dog ran out of a home into the street, almost was hit. But our animal control was there rounding up dogs, housing them here at the police department and getting them back to their owners at a later time. And we made six arrests for a variety of crimes and I'll talk about some of those with some photographs here shortly. So some of the citations, we had probably, I think the highest number that I can ever recall, if I was to put 2022 up here for police citations, it would say 20. We issued 20 citations in 2022, 68 in 2023, 56 last year and this year, we jumped up to 70 citations. Fireworks confiscated, we had, I can tell you in 2022, there was 100 pounds, 2373 in 2024, we had 330, which was a very high number. And going back to 2024, we had an operation prior to the Fourth and we seized majority of the fireworks during an arrest of an individual on Goodwin Street prior to the Fourth. So the numbers this year are 85, which is pretty much in line to what we traditionally will get on that night, a little higher than 23. Here are the fire department and I can speak to it or for, for the fire department, calls for service between the 28th of June and July 5th in 2023. And these are just all calls that the fire department responded to, 76 in 2024, 81, 2025 is 68. And calls directed or related specific to fire calls, you'll see down here the numbers. This year, there were eight, prior to that, six, and then 11 in 2023. Here is a, and I apologize, it's a little dark here, but you can see this is the heat map that's created with the AI intelligence. So it's as these spots are being cited, it will start to create a heat map and the brighter the color that you see are the hot, hot zones. These are areas that are going off over and over again. And even the purple colors you see and then it'll kind of faint off. The green is a hotspot. The bright colors, just imagine it's like the sun. These are the areas that are extremely hot. This is what it looked like that night in terms of enforcement. And there's some other areas you can't see. We got, we cited a lot of other areas that didn't even appear on here, but the areas that were going off that you all heard over and over and over again, we, we got majority of these folks, in my opinion. Here's just a few photos here of some of the seizures we had that evening. The city attorney was involved in one of these in the top right. Very good eye, by the way. We seized quite a bit, but most importantly, maybe not most importantly, but a significant incident is this gun here. And this was officers, in addition to addressing fireworks, we had two teams, one allocated directly to deal with fireworks and another team addressing all of the community issues that come up like DUIs, parties, fights, et cetera. And one of the teams stopped a vehicle right in front of where I was actually on a traffic stop on San Lucas and a passenger of the vehicle ran out with this handgun, fled into some neighbor's property and hid from us for close to 40, 45 minutes. And we later apprehended, found him hiding because we didn't stop. And that's the one thing in seaside, if you do these things, we're not stopping until we catch you. And we caught this person, determined he was involved in gang activity. He had this gun that was loaded. There was one missing, so we don't know if he fired one off, but he was arrested and housed appropriately. Here are some of the expenses this year for overtime and I'll, I won't go through each number, I'll just put this up for display. The total cost in terms of the overtime with public safety is $28,000, $88.89. Year before that, we were at $52,000. We reduced that, we reduced some of the costs, not to just save money because I know the city of Seaside will invest everything they can to keep the community safe, but we just did things and have tailored it from meetings like this to make us better each year. We removed the security company, et cetera, things of that nature. And we actually did more and spent or, or cost less to, to do more, which is very impressive. Here are some of the expenses. This relates to the safe and sane and the gross sales this year was safe and sane was And the physical impact when we add in the overtime costs and revenue. And again, I try to emphasize, we do not go out and enforce to make money. That is not our goal. Our goal is to create, correct illegal behavior and keep our community safe for quality of life purposes. Just to show this number of gross sales is actually pretty much the lowest number we've seen in at least. we've seen in at least five years. And just to put that in context, in two thousand and twenty four, the gross sales was two hundred and forty one thousand, six hundred and twelve. Two thousand and twenty three was two hundred and ninety four thousand. Two thousand and twenty two, and these are approximate numbers, two thousand and twenty two was two hundred and sixty six thousand. Two thousand and twenty one was two hundred and twenty six thousand, and in two thousand and twenty was two hundred and sixty six thousand. So there was a drop in gross sales as it relates to Safe and Sane. I really wanted to highlight that we are listening to the recommendations that we give and that council gives back to us and what our community tells us. This is from two thousand and twenty four. So we completed these for this particular year, and that was including parking enforcement team on the fourth, increased number of drones deployed, pass out flyers to problematic areas earlier, recommend no parking signs, curbs on General Jim Boulevard, host community meetings to get the community feedback, and make sure the end time for use of Safe and Sane was at ten P M. We did all of these things, and they worked out pretty well. Moving forward with some recommendations is we we found a big issue at the Home Depot parking lot. And although we have a lot of folks that go there and they're lawfully lighting off Safe and Sane fireworks, it was very crowded, and you had a lot of the folks that were cleaning up after themselves, and they were doing a nice job. They had buckets of water, they were being safe. But you had a lot of pockets within the parking lot where they were not doing that, and they were leaving behind debris. We had to go and do a sweep there just before ten P M. And right at ten P M., I think it took us maybe ten or so minutes where we were having officers go around and politely asking people, reminding them, we have a ten P M. Curfew for Safe and Sane. It's time to move along. And I will tell you, a lot of the people that left our parking lot were not headed left on to Kane Del Ray, they were headed right, and they were jumping on the off ramps going either north or south. So I suspect they probably weren't even residents, but that's okay, because we know people come in to buy these Safe and Sane. But we have a recommendation to either work with the Home Depot's ownership to either potentially close that parking lot at a certain time or maybe recommend to them, suggest to them to have their own onsite security just to help monitor that. Because I don't, I just, I don't want people coming here and creating unsafe environment and then leaving behind debris. That's not who we are in seaside. They have to respect our community if they come here, even if it's on private property. The second command post really was ineffective. It was vacant majority of the night in the Home Depot parking lot. That was designed for officers to go there and as a substation, that really was deemed to be ineffective, and it wasn't used at all. So I think we can eliminate that piece for next year, and that'll just save an extra headache of trying to set up a command post. The recommend no parking, that puts a lot of of pressure on our public works department, setting up barriers. I believe the the most effective thing would be to have year round signage, because there are areas in there that are unclear when where you can cannot park. And if those signs were up all the time and curb being painted where they needed to be painted, no parking, that would make things very easy for our city staff to go and enforce these things, not just on the fourth, but year round. Next year, we also want to do a little bit more on safety tips as it relates to pet awareness. We really want to get messages out as the like the picture I showed earlier to show what this does to pets, and we have the best animal control officer around, so I know we'll be able to accomplish that smoothly. Our hotline messages, I want to do better on how we streamline the calls coming in. So messaging next year, I think, is going to be key for us. But we get a lot of calls from the hotlines, and then people can't get through sometimes if they're calling and we're on the phone with someone. But we'll get a lot of calls saying, I hear fireworks, and I'm making this up. I hear fireworks in the twelve hundred block of Olympia. And at that time, we may have three police officers who are there on Olympia or have just been on Olympia, have just cited Olympia, but there's nothing specific. We want to really educate our community to say, here's when you call this hotline, when you have a good location or you think you know precisely where it's coming from, because we're out there already. We know where these are coming from, the areas were already there, and we don't want to burden folks of calling and getting frustrated if they don't feel like they're getting called back immediately. And lastly, send letters to previously cited locations, which we did last year, but want to do this again this year, is send these out. And I have a short video here, and prior to me playing this, because this is important, it's relatively short. I also want to note that, and the city attorney can correct me, but already to date, we have collected on, I believe, twenty two citations. So our collaborative effort is showing. This is important to me because seaside has taken lead on fireworks enforcement. We are not perfect. We have a lot of work to do moving forward, but we're transparent. We tell our community what we're doing, inside out, good, bad, and ugly. And we have offered the last, I think, three or four years, the news to ride with us, and K I O N. Was jumped on that, and they rode with us a lot of the evening. And I just want to show this news clip that they aired that evening.
Covering the central coast, this is K I O N. News first attempt.
See if they got seriously hurt. There was a firework that exploded.
Seaside Police saying that they are pulling out all the stops this year to prevent further fireworks related injuries and accidents. Good evening. It's great to be with you tonight. We start with local law enforcement focusing on firework crackdowns. This, as the Fourth of July, is typically the cops' busiest day of the year, and seaside alone say that they have dozens of patrols, flock camera technology, and drone pilots on the lookout. Atash Shaheen takes us behind the scenes of the firework fight in Salinas tonight.
This is the Operational Command Center in Seaside. Officers and firefighters monitor a map of the city, trying to pinpoint exactly where illegal fireworks are coming from. And they've got a few drones flying around to help.
Well, we saw some smoke in the air, and once we see that, we flew over to the target area. And now we're checking it out, just surveying this to see if they're going to do any more. But hopefully, hopefully, the mere presence of the drone will keep them from lighting up more fireworks, because nobody wants to take it.
Citations are a thousand dollars per illegal firework. After years of having trouble actually enforcing and collecting those fines, things turned around in the past couple of years when the city attorney put resources into collections.
As we've already collected as a city, over fifty thousand dollars in fines.
Police Chief Nick Borges tells me seaside had a reputation as being a particularly chaotic city on this holiday, but it's starting to turn around.
I'm just shocked. I've been here almost twenty three years. I've never heard it this quiet in the city of Seaside with fireworks up to now. We'll see how the night goes, but up to this point, I can absolutely say there's been a dramatic difference in the the noise complaints of fireworks.
Sergeant Eddie Enriquez was also surprised while driving around on patrol that he wasn't responding to any illegal fireworks calls. Granted, this was still before sundown.
It's possible that this year is when people really gotten gotten the word that it's a hefty fine, and they don't want to get it, they don't want to get fined such a large amount, and so they're not, they're deciding to do the right thing.
Another important side of fireworks response, looking out for scared pets.
You know, as people are having more and more fun and dogs get freaked out from some fireworks, sometimes gates get left open, and then they end up escaping, and that's when I come in.
Alex Shelgren is the Animal Control Specialist for S P D.
But a lot of the times when they become in this freaked out mode, just like with us humans, we have a lot of adrenaline rush there going through when we kind of just go. You know, the dogs will do the same thing if they get out and they keep hearing bangs. You know, they'll run one way, hear another bang, run another way, hear another bang, and then just keep running and not realize where they're going.
His job is to track down any pets that get loose and try to get them home. But tonight, he says plenty are likely going to end up spending the night at the police department's kennel. Now, even though the night started quiet, it's already started to heat up, and Sergeant Enriquez and everybody else says they're going to do everything they can to respond quickly and to keep things safe. Because while lots of folks love fireworks, he's seen things go wrong too many times.
There was a kid that got seriously hurt. There was a firework that exploded. They got some serious injury to their face or eye. That was a pretty sad situation.
In seaside, Atash Shaheen, K I O N. News, Channel forty six.
Now that it's after ten P M., ten oh four, exactly, the use of any fireworks is illegal and can get you that thousand dollar citation. Police have begun enforcing a curfew on Safe and Sane fireworks this year.
Thank you very much. And with that, the fire chief and I are happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for excellent presentation. Are there any questions, Councilmember Garcia Zola?
Thank you. On slide number seven, it says record staff answered eighty nine calls. How many were received?
You got it? Is that eight? No. Slide seven. Can't. Let me look here. I I don't have a specific number of how many were, like, if somebody had just called. These are the ones that we we took in. There was not a complaint, though, of us not being able to take calls, but I don't have a specific number.
Okay, and then fireworks confiscated in pounds decreased between two thousand and twenty four and two thousand and twenty five. What did we do differently in two thousand and twenty four than this year?
We had a large bus that we came across prior to the fourth that gave us a large seizure last year.
Did we start confiscating in advance or after, or was this just the day of?
This year?
Yeah.
We had a arrest this year was a very small amount, but we had an arrest this year, and in parallel, we had fireworks in addition to that.
How about last year?
Last year was the same, almost the same scenario, except this particular individual had quite a bit of fireworks last year.
Gotcha. And then the letters that we sent out, I think we only sent out a hundred and thirty two warning letters to hotspots. Do we plan to continue doing this? And if so, was there a thought or discussion of sending it to the entire city?
I I have had discussions with the city manager on this, and I know he sent out a lot. I don't have the specific number of how many letters the city manager's office sent out. But for us, we definitely want to do this in relation to the flock in real time, where we know there's an explosion, it's detected as a firework, and we want to flood the entire neighbors with a letter to let them know, we hear what's going on. Please take a change of course of action.
And and you said that when constituents call, there's a specific or educational component that you're trying to do to let community members know when to call. Can you just go over that again?
Well, that's that's a recommendation for next year. We haven't done that up to this point, and we have a hotline that really seems to be, it's not as effective as it could be. And I think if we get some more education, we will streamline when somebody calls, when they should be calling. So we know that hotline is something valid, or we can dispatch an officer in real time, because someone has specific information of where fireworks are going off.
Okay, sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may pretend then, Councilmember Miller.
I, first of all, congratulations. I drove around, I drive around pretty much every year, and this year did seem up to the fourth seemed to be far the best, and even up till nine, nine fifteen, it was pretty quiet out there. So I think it was, what you did was, or what the team did, was very successful. Some just some concerns. I was at Home Depot between nine thirty and nine forty five, and you were absolutely right. There were a lot of people there, but I saw about six to ten fireworks appeared to go high in the air, so I'm sure they were legal in that general area. And you mentioned that you didn't have a vehicle there, and there was debris. But I think there was also numerous. I mean, there were hundreds of people up, but there were numerous illegal fireworks as well as the evening went on. I assume I was only there for about twenty minutes. The idea of potentially closing it or minimizing it seems a good idea. Have you noticed the same thing in the past with the legal fireworks going off as well as the other issues regarding the debris?
At Home Depot specifically? Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so that is a problem area.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, if we could, that would be one of my suggestions, because that seemed a with that many people and illegal fireworks is also could be a danger issue as far as someone get physically hurt. I got some people contacted me regarding the phone calls that you mentioned. They always got, they said they get lying, and I, you know, it's a, the lines were busy when they called, so they couldn't get through, and they gave up. Some of the stuff that you're going to implement next year, would that help alleviate that concern?
That would be the goal.
Okay. And then citations are in congratulations of the, but are some of the citations duplicated? So one house may have, I'm making this up, six, ten, five citations. So there may be, yeah, is that a, is that a concern? And also, let's say I'm making five citations, they get the fine for five thousand dollars. As an example, is that true? So did you have duplicate citations of one household? How many? And do they get as many citations as the dollar might mount find? Is that a fair question?
Yes, and the answer to your question, that is yes. If we can establish multiple explosions illegally went off at that location, we will issue multiple citations, and that happened this year and also happened last year as well.
I know the city attorney can, city, can you talk a little bit more? How many, can you talk a little bit more? How many did that happen at? Were there significant numbers of citations at particular households like this?
I don't have this specific.
Yeah, I want to stay away from calling particular people out. I know we're not going to mention names, but keep it in general. All right, don't, we're not here to be picking out people.
No, I wasn't.
No, you're not. I know you're not. I'm talking, I'm talking, I'm talking to the ether, so we're all clear. We're doing enforcement, and so I answered the question, but I just asked both of you guys to.
Yes, sir. We have done that, and there were, I don't have a specific data on locations and how many, but I can say there were multiple locations that had a variety, multiple violations and citations. I know that for certain.
Okay.
Through the mayor. And yeah, just to add on to that, I do have the numbers, and there are seven locations in the city that received multiple citations this year, and those multiple citations range from fifteen at one place to two. So kind of a full range, fifteen and ten are the two highest ones. And the place that had ten citations has already paid all ten.
And just so I may be on some good news, is that, is the number's pretty good as far as I get cited last year? Are they being cited again this year, or have they learned their lesson and not being cited because not because they got fined last year? Or so, because we're doing a better government enforcement, which is great. They're paying the price. They should learn a lesson. Therefore, they won't do it again, where in previous years, they never got, they never paid the piper or the city for their right.
Yes, so I will say two of our very high profile locations from two thousand and twenty four that were issued multiple citations, went through our process, went through the city man, city attorney's office appeal process, paid fines, both, one of the locations was a residence, zero activity two thousand and twenty five. The second location, which is a complex, the activity reduced significantly this year. So we are seeing a very positive impact on our efforts.
Great. And my last question. The flock seemed to be very successful, but we also know that, or we believe we know, or think I know, like, during New Year's, there's an increase of illegal fireworks or other times of the year. Are letters going to be sent out during those times a year? So that way, they're enforcing it during others that may not be as significant, but they're significant if you live next door to that person.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it'll be like a year round kind of sort of a program we're enforcing.
Correct.
Illegal fireworks. Okay, and again, thank you very much. I think there's significant improvement, even though there were obviously abuse of law, and hopefully we'll continue to lower those numbers every year as far as the negativity. Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I think during your presentation, you said you were on a car stop on the fourth. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you're out during the whole night, patrolling and
issuing citations, stopping cars, helping the officers, absolutely.
I have to say that that shows a tremendous amount of leadership, sir, that you're out there doing that. In terms of the fiscal impact on slide seventeen, we have expense revenue and fiscal impact of seven, nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety one. I thought maybe the city manager, the city manager's office could enlighten me maybe why we don't include fines from revenue from fines into that figure. Is there a reason for that? Is that because they haven't been collected yet? Or is that, or is that not relevant to this?
Correct, they have not been collected yet. So, or it's, are those, let me, let me ask the city attorney. Are those, have those numbers been included to twenty two thousand?
So the actual collections of citations have not been reflected on this slide, but I do have the but I do have the numbers if you would like to know those.
Well, I just, I just wonder if, if it's a fair thing to say that we collected, let's say we collected 20, and we had a positive of 20, it's $1,000 per fine, we have 20,000. If it's a fair thing to say that actually after the fiscal impact is actually the city recouped all of its overtime expenses and, and some.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, very good. And then my last question is, I know this topic is the Fourth of July, but it really did seem like prior April, May, June, I didn't hear any. And I'm in kind of one of these hot zones. I got a letter from the city manager and from the chief, the police. And where I live is, is, I believe, but I didn't hear any so this year. So leading up to the Fourth of July, were our calls for service of fireworks, were they lower than in prior years?
They were dramatically lower. There were some reports of fireworks. It was extremely limited. But I just want to emphasize that any explosion that happens and someone in our community hears it, that's the worst day and the worst experience they have. So we don't want to, I don't want to minimize that for them, but in terms of data, substantially less, correct?
Great, because I think that a lot of the frustration and the frustration of people that would come down to City Hall and, and come to our meetings and express their displeasure for the fireworks, a lot of it was, was, was leading up to, was leading up to the Fourth of July and having to hear the fireworks for a longer season. So, you know, we don't want to let off the gas now. It's, I guess my point is, is that even though the Fourth of July is over, we still want to, you know, make sure that we're enforcing this all year round. Thank you so much, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, the, so to speak, I, you know, I don't, I don't know how many times people set them off and they go in the air throughout the year. But those so-called cherry bombs is a noise abatement type of issue. So you guys track those down just like it was any other loud noise that shouldn't be made.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. I, I got one of those near my house, right? But yeah, and I, and I say that to say, you made a good point, chief. You know, you don't take away from, the data says it's significantly reduced, but to the person that lives on that block, those one or two is very disturbing.
Correct.
Right? And so we're going to do our best to reduce those.
That's right.
I know you're working on it. And I want to say kudos to you, like the council member Miller said, and I think others have said, you know, thank you for your leadership, you know, leaders lead. So you were out there, thank, thank other people at home by 12 o'clock. But you were there, and when you guys left, that's when people came out at night. But we can't expect you guys to be there throughout the night. But what I see is that the recommendations that you and your team and everybody that worked on it last year came up with reduced the numbers. I mean, it's some other factors, right? Some other factors, but reduced the numbers. So I would say for your recommendations now, I would just continue to refine them and, and include them in next year's presentations. And if there's anything the council can do, you and the city manager, I'm sure will, will bring that forward on behalf of the team that works on these things. And we want to appreciate the city attorney for doing the paperwork to get these citations paid in full. And we expect them to get paid in full. And I would just say, I think we should stay away from putting the citations with the, the cost of doing it. We don't know, one of I think we're, we're trying to pay for the protection by giving them a citation. Right? We don't want to, we don't want to bring that on to you and your department as though that is part of this. You know, that goes to where the city manager deems it should go, but it shouldn't be, hey. And I know, I'm not saying anyone said that. I just, we shouldn't be up here saying, well, everything worked out because we're 20,000 to the good, right? No, that one sound that someone didn't appreciate, or their dog missing or animal missing is, is one restless night that they didn't deserve. So I'm going to take it out to the public, and then we'll see if there's anything else.
May I make one last comment? I also want to credit our fire chief, and I forgot to do that in the beginning. Our fire chief was riding around with his team, their, their trucks all night long. He worked the entire night with his crew. Not only did they just work at, as an engine, our fire chief, he rode with the city attorney at one point. So I want to credit the fire department too. They are oftentimes our unsung heroes. So we appreciate you, chief, and your team as well. Thank you, mayor.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to be remiss and, and leave out the fire department, but that's why I kept saying it's a team.
That's right.
And so, and that's, that's my thing, is not just the first responders, police and the fire. It's, it's the administration, the legal, and all of the other city engineer and public works with signs and stuff like that. It's a whole team, and I know you represent that team. So thank you for that.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Lynda Cunningham, member of the homeless committee, speaking as a citizen of Seaside. And I couldn't agree more. I did a random polling just to make sure I wasn't, you know, just missing it and asked several people in June, how do you feel about these fireworks? And one person's comment was strangely silent. What a gift. And I do believe we're working towards driving all those numbers down to zero. If we get the fireworks down, the fines go down, the overtime, everything goes down. So then I think the goal, everybody's goal is zero on everything. I used the text number. I ended up started sending screenshots because I knew they were down the hill from me. I didn't know the names of those streets. But I just screenshotted the map, circled it, and said, oh, they're over in this area. We see the drone fly over. I heard my neighbor say, oh, there's the drone. The drones are a deterrent. I think the city should buy a bunch of like dummy drones and just fly them around. So people think the drone is over, because they're cheaper, right? You can get cheaper, you know, they don't have to be the most expensive drone, but just nobody will know the real drone from the not the real picture drones. But that would just be one thing we could do. I do, I wanted to remember that I heard on the radio that this weekend there was a life altering injury in Salinas due to a firework. The person that I believe was a child was lifelighted to San Jose with, quote, "life altering injuries." That does not sound good, and I don't know how a parent would ever look at their child or anybody the rest of their life and not have enormous guilt for thinking, oh, a firework is fun. I wondered if the, you know, if you get 15 fines, like, is that even a deterrent? At what point do you get arrested? I mean, but again, I'm grateful that they paid. I also remember one of the things was to close the parking lot, Laguna Grande, right? The fires in the trash. Wonder how that went? Was it easy to do? I love this AI reporting app. I was, the text, whoever was answering texts, they were doing a great job. Like at one part, they were so cute. We're being bombarded right now. That's hysterical. But yeah, my thought was, you know, we need an AI app where people can, you know, touch the map, say, you know, I'd be an official spotter, you know, you can't have everybody, you can have 500 people reporting. But then maybe the AI can build these heat maps. I'd also wondered if Flock could use my cell phone as a listening device if I wanted to. So we have more listening devices without having to buy more Flock cameras. And, oh, shoot, I just, oh, yeah. Carmel had these really simple little signs, paper, I, my printer, my photo, my photo didn't come out, but it was just, you know, a piece of paper, it had a dynamite, no fireworks taped to the stop signs. Low tech.
Carl Lobel, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. My question, what is the proximity of the hotspots? Because out of my three properties, two of them got notices from the mayor, I'm not mayor, the city manager. And there was absolutely in the last years, there wasn't any fireworks in those areas. So I'd like that letter to go out to everyone. It didn't say warning letter on it. It just said it was advising everyone. But to, so that everyone has that information, it would be beneficial for all of us to send it to every resident and every homeowner in Seaside. That way we're not just targeting one area. My second question is with regards to fines. Are we saying that one particular person can get up to 15 citations in one night? So if it goes off, they get that citation. If it goes off again, another citation, up to 15 or so forth? The third one was, I also drove around and I did see Home Depot. I know that in the past, we had a designated area, I believe it was M-Gym where you can do the fireworks. Is that a consideration for us to have? Because as we know, you know, there's a lot of people that did end up going in that area. And I did see police officers, and I actually saw a fire department there. So it looks like it is an opportunity for us to engage with our residents that want to do that in a safe place and also monitored because it can become a, a, a bigger issue. The last question, and I forgot, was with regards to prosecution. So I know the city attorney rode around. Is that going to be a habitual thing yearly that you'll do? And is that more so to understand the need? But also if there is prosecutions that come down the pipeline, would you stand in that to be able to be a witness? So full prosecution would go? I just want to get an understanding if that is going to be an ongoing thing. Drones, that's what it was, drones. I saw the hub being at the International School. Was there several other hubs? I saw a lot of drones around my area. I'm just wondering if the proximity of that location was to be closer to the hot spots? And how many drones were dispatched and used that evening? And as far as physical impact, I want to understand why we don't include the time that our police chief and our, our fire chief income isn't on there? Because that, that's a big number that we should include.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Public comments closed. I think of several areas, couple of questions by the public for the police chief, fire chief, city manager, city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. I'll do my best to answer these. Yes, I did not mention, but we also, one of the recommendations, we did lock off Laguna Grande parks and a lot of the parks in this region, and that did help us quite a bit. We didn't have to respond there for issues. That was very helpful. City staff did a great job doing that. In terms of dummy drones, I would just say our city council has been so supportive that I would ask probably for a real drone, not a dummy drone, if we had that option. Multiple citations, I think the question was individuals versus locations. So we will make an arrest if we have an individual who's lighting off multiple citations. We're going to arrest them. We're going to incarcerate them. They're a threat to the community at that point, or a nuisance, rather. So, but these are locations that we're citing multiple times. These are locations where we can identify who lit off a particular firework. We know it's coming from a location. There could be a large party there. So that property is, is getting the citation. That's how we're kind of differentiating the two. Flock listening, flock has a lot of capabilities. I don't, I don't know that I would engage private citizens to use their phones. I don't even know if that's able to be done. But again, we have a supportive city council that if we need additional equipment, I'm confident that we could ask for that and work with the city's budget to get that if we needed. And right now we are very well off with what we have. Proximity to hotspots, the letters that went out, keep in mind, there's two letters. One was through the city manager's office, looking at past hotspots that happened. So there are community members that may have received a letter, and there's zero activity happening in 2025. But in 2024, there was, there were some data to support that, and that's why the city manager's office sent out those letters. And the police department focused on real time 2025 detection for these explosions, for fireworks. Those letters were sent out to locations where there were fireworks within that region. And we would do it, for example, if you lived in the 1700 block of, of Kenneth Street, and a firework went off within that region, we would send it in that entire block of the 1700 block and likely east and west blocks as well in that zone. Talked about that one. I'll let the city attorney speak to that, but my, my understanding and what the city attorney did, in my perspective, was get a real flavor of what was happening in the community. Because keep in mind, when the city attorney does these appeals, the police department is going in and testifying of what we're seeing, why we're doing certain things, and why we're not doing other things. And this gives our city attorney some tools and some background and expertise in understanding what we're doing. So the city attorney being out there was very helpful for us. And also too, we have the city attorney that maybe could be there to help educate us on certain things, such as if we're going to give a citation to someone and she doesn't feel that that's a, a, a thing we should be doing for a certain situation, she can help provide some legal guidance in real time, which is very rare and unique. And just as a side note, the city attorney found a stop sign that had been crashed into in a hit and run. And the officers didn't see it. The city attorney saw it. And we did a brief investigation, relatively brief, and we were able to locate the suspect vehicle just up the street. So having extra eyes out there was great. I don't think it conflicted in any way. It actually enhanced our ability to be better in the field. And again, that's just my view. We chose a command location because it sits very high at the old Manzanita location, 1600 block, just, just near the fire station. It's a great place to view things, to deploy the drones. And from that purview, you can see fireworks throughout the community, and it helps them deploy. And those drones can fly all the way to the beach, all the way back, even further. So those drones are going everywhere from that one precise location that we showed in the news clip. In terms of the salary of the fire chief and myself, we are salaried employees. So even though we're out there, keep in mind, the fire chief and I, I think we started our day that morning at eight o'clock. And I don't remember the exact time, but it was somewhere around 2:00 AM when both of the chiefs went off of work. We're salaried employees. It didn't cost the city anything. We're, we're paid, we're exempt employees. So we're here, we work, we work oftentimes on our days off. So it didn't impact anything in terms of our wages. I think I covered as much as I could in that.
Yeah, as far as the city manager of letters that went out in early June, those addresses were determined from a hotspot map creation of the last three years of violations. And then we blocked out areas of the community that we would determine those hotspots. And so those letters went out to 3,000 residents or more. So if you did get a letter, again, it was preliminary enforcement and education for a very wide swath of this community.
Yes, thank you. And so adding on to what the chief said about city attorney's involvement out there in the prosecution, my ride along was incredibly valuable for not only my own education about what goes on out in the field. I was not acting as a witness, but really as an observer of continuous improvement and things that were going on out in the field in real time. It's really important, and it really helps my overall education and enforceability and suggestions for how we can keep moving forward to get better every, every time. And then there was another question on the maximum number of fines. As the chief, chief said that the multiple fines were primarily directed at residential areas where maybe you couldn't determine the person, but you knew it was related to an address. There is no maximum number. These are based on one shoot off, one ticket. It can add up really fast, and this year we are really seeing the multiples in action. That, that number 15 was not a maximum. That was just the maximum number of the citations in this particular cycle, if that makes sense, in terms of my compilation of the data. And as the chief said, I did not observe in the last three years, multiple repeats. All of the citations, with the exception of one, were all new addresses. So that's really good. And the breakdown, just to add a little more, between curfew and possession, it's about 12 curfew tickets to 58 possession tickets. So the 10 o'clock curfew is starting to get out there. The 6%, about 6% number of tickets that we issued is going to start making an impact on making sure that people are cognizant about that curfew moving forward. And to add on, we've collected actually 25 citations as of today.
Thank you. Any other questions? There is a recommendation to receive a report, so. I don't think we need a motion for that.
You do not.
Yeah. Let's go on. Let's keep driving on. Let's, let's take a break so we can take a break. All right, return.
Well, move to item number ten B. Receive update on the city of Seaside Car Week events scheduled from August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five through August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for this item. We're in a presentation by Dan Meewa, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Dan Meewa, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to go over the events that we have scheduled within the city of Seaside during Car Week. Car Week officially begins tomorrow through the county, but we have a variety of events that will begin on Monday. So actually, we actually have seven events that will be occurring in the city of Seaside. Normally, we report on four. There are two new events this year, and there's one that I've included that it happens at the Embassy Suites, but I wanted to make sure that we have that that event that everyone can see what's going on in Car Week. So I'm just going to go down this list. I'll go into a little bit more in a couple other slides, but we got the Classic Porsche event on Monday, the eleventh, from four to eight on Del Monte. Also, on the eleventh, we have the Automobilia Collection and Expo, which is at Embassy Suites. It's a three-day event from ten to five, except on Tuesday, they go till eight. There will be an auction going on there. Then on Wednesday, the thirteenth, this was one of the new events. We have the BMW M Sport Event, which is taking place at the BMW dealership, and that will be from three to seven. On Friday, the fifteenth, this is in conjunction with Concors Italiano, they have added another event. So this is the paddock. It's featuring Radwood, and that will also be at the golf course on Friday from three P M. to eight P M. Then on Saturday, we have the three big ones. We have Concors de Le Mans here on City of Lon from eight to one. Concors Italiano at the Bayonet Black Horse Golf Course from eight to four, and then Exotics on Broadway at their new time from eleven A M. to four P M. So a little bit about these events, of course, Classic Porsche, this is free. This is the fourth or fifth year they've been running it here in Seaside. This is just for fellow Porsche enthusiasts to get out there, mix and mingle, enjoy a variety of different Porsche vehicles. This year, they're going to be celebrating the legacy of the nine eleven model, so looking forward to a nice, good Porsche event. Kick really kicking off our Car Week. The road will be closed roughly right around twelve thirty, and it'll be from the Tioga to the Granite Rock Building. They're going to have cars inside and out on display, so it should be a really good kickoff for the city. When we talk about the Automobilia Collectors Expo, this is a unique event as it is more of an auction. You can go in there and I mean, they will have some vehicles there, but it's more of automobile collectors' items and memorabilia and things of that nature. This is, you can get a one-day pass for either one of the three days for fifteen dollars, or you can get all three for thirty. It's open in the exhibit hall over at the Embassy Suites from ten to five, and then on the new piece they have for this month or this year is the Live Automobilia Auction on Tuesday from four to eight. And it looks like their featured car will be a nineteen fifty-four Jaguar that they'll be auctioning off, so that's kind of like their showpiece that they will be handling. The new event, I just got word, I just found out about this a few days ago, actually. I had no idea that BMW was doing this, so I wanted to make sure that we were including it. It's a free event. It's their inaugural event, and they just want to get, you know, Monterey, they want to be a part of it. They want to get the residents involved some way or another and focus on BMW. I think it's a car that generally doesn't get a lot of love during Car Week, so they they wanted to kind of take advantage and work on having a family-friendly event and put it out to the community. So we're lucky that we have them here in Seaside. So that will be at their shop on One Geary Plaza Road. The paddock featuring Radwood, this is another event up at the Bayonet Bayonet Black Horse Golf Course. The tickets for this are seventy-five dollars. Thirteen and under are free with a paid admission. This is a vibrant new addition to Monterey Car Week focused on inclusion, creative, and connections. The paddock brings together diverse range of automobile culture, and it's really going to be focusing on cars from the eighties and the nineties. It's kind of what they're going for, and they're going to have about fifty cars celebrating that style. Then we know what goes on here, Concors de Le Mans. It's the best of the worst, like they say. I've been here on this event numerous times, and I don't think I've ever seen as many people on this lawn as they get during that event. It is quite a spectacle. They have a lot of fun activities for the kids, and it's a lot of good for those individuals that don't want to see the fancy cars. They want to see the ones that are, you know, the rust buckets as they will, so they will be setting up here on the Friday before. A lot of their events and things there will start early in the morning, but they will have overnight security just to make sure that all their cars and the stuff they place out there on Friday will be taken care of. Concors Italiano up at the golf course, this is, you know, the the big ticket item out of all of our Car Week events, two hundred and fifty-dollar general admission, thirteen and under are free. It is from eight to four. You'd focus on Ferraris, Lamborghinis, Maseratis. This is, you know, they are going under a new ownership. Some of you might know the new chairperson of Concors Italiano is Tonya Costa from All In Monterey. She kind of taken this this event under her wing, so, you know, she's a fantasy side. She does a lot of work here, so I think we're really lucky to have her kind of leading this event up there, and they're going to have food and music and just really honor the Italian heritage. And then we got Exotics on Broadway, so they have gone through a few changes here for this year, so for the public, just want to make sure that they're aware. We will be closing Broadway and Fremont, so Broadway will be closed from Del Monte to Fremont Boulevard, and then Fremont will be closed from Clementina to Amador in both directions. So there will be kind of two phases of this event. All of Broadway, all the way up, will be the free area. There's going to be a hundred and fifty-seven cars on display on Broadway. There'll be a couple vendor booths, but it's mostly focusing on, you know, the the hypercars and giving the community that really excellent look of a free car show. They're also going to have a modest ticket fee of thirty dollars for the second action, second section on Fremont, which is going to be more the the advanced hypercars. While the emissions are through thirty dollars, it will be free for kids thirteen and under as well, so they'll, the kids will still have access to get in there with the paid ticket. They are going to have over three hundred cars on display between the two areas. The road closure will be from twelve A M. till eight P M. As I stated earlier, the event time has changed from eleven to four. Last year, it was one to six, so hopefully, you know, we want to get people in early and out a little bit earlier than they were in the past years. We are anticipating around twenty-five thousand people in attendance, and they'll have, you know, so have vendors staged with live music and entertainment. There'll be a variety of different spots for individuals that can buy their tickets to go into the the other the the paid entrance, and then I will say that they will be donating a percentage of the the revenue they get from that paid area to a couple of our local nonprofits, so they really wanted to make sure that they were giving back to the community on that. Some stuff that the city has been doing in preparation of exotics, you might have seen Public Works out there as early earlier this week, streets sweeping, cleaning the sidewalks, you know, we know we've had some challenges with the birds over on Broadway. They did a really good job of cleaning up a lot of that debris that the birds have left. They understand that, you know, they, once they clean it, they got to go back, and so they're going to be keeping a vigilant eye over it over the next week. We cleaned it, we cleaned the planters, the trees got a haircut, so there's a lot of good work going on on Broadway. And then through the Economic Development Department and the City Managers Leadership, we've also worked up a program to try and help the bird issue where the city is working with the business owners to kind of install some bird deterrents on businesses that they will allow us to. So you'll see the city going up and putting some of those spikes on those corner edges of the businesses to kind of alleviate some of that the challenges that we are getting with the birds. One of the the hotspot buildings, we are, since we did that, I think, two days ago, we've already seen the the birds' reminances kind of disappear already, so it is working, and and we continue to work on the on that issue, you know, for for the future. So in the communication that we've done in in regards to Broadway and this event is we sent letters to residents and businesses reminding them of the the closures. They held two Zoom meetings, one back on July twenty-eighth, and we heard about the second one that was held a couple days ago. We pushed in social media and put out press releases. Exotics has been pushing out everything on their social media and through their channels. We will be putting out our big message boards, you know, the day before, letting the letting the community know where to park. And Volar has also helped us with some traffic advisory as well as some promotion as we want to make sure that people are aware of the event, you know, and to come on out, because we are, we want the seaside businesses on Broadway to really thrive during this time, as this is a big a big driver for them. So public safety for exotics, Seaside PD have six dedicated officers plus a sergeant for this event. The parking team will be monitoring all the areas that we know. In years past, probation sent a few officers, and we're hoping that they'll be able to to do that again. The exotics team, they are working with a new security company, Miller Event Management. They'll be supplying forty security officers that will be in multiple locations throughout the event, and then the PD is also add an enhanced video surveillance that will be up and down Broadway and throughout Fremont to kind of help with the the command post. There will be a command post at the as which we have for this. This will be the second year that we've done that. Fire will be providing onsite first aid for the duration of the event. Little new thing that they'll be doing this year is they will be operating out of the seven oh five building, so they'll be right there in the middle of Broadway with good access up and down both areas to to address any issues that may come up. They have an I A P for the event, and the drones will also be flying. And so this is the, when we look at the map, this is the map for Broadway and how they will plan on setting up all the cars. All those little slots are all the cars, so they're going to be going all the way down. You can see those blue areas. That's where they're going to be having the security personnel, and their, the green is the exotics management staff, so they're going to have their own teams throughout the event in a variety of different locations. And then the V I P parking, you can see in the blue, those are the more higher-end cars for the Broadway free section that will be up in the front closer to the intersection of Fremont. And then you can see this will be the section on Fremont. There's a couple entrances and exits that eventgoers could go that have the paid ticket. There'll be a V I P ten, a special hypercar display, and you can see that they are, this one I didn't have, this one doesn't have the staff on there, but they'll have three staff on every exit as well as every blocked street area as well, so there're going to be a lot of event staff and security up in those areas. And then I wanted to show this to working, exotics, working with the Economic Development Department. They put together this restaurant map. This restaurant map will be pushed out to all the eventgoers that take the free shuttle. It'll be out there for them. It really highlights all of the restaurants that are within the corridors, because we want to make sure that those individuals that are coming to our event are shopping at our restaurants, getting, you know, putting this little economic boost into the community. And as we have for the last few years, there will be a shuttle route. We picked up on General Gym and Eucalyptus. Eventgoers can park up all the way up Eucalyptus Road. They'll come on down to the shuttle stop. A little different, this was an older map. They didn't send me the new one on time, but the shuttle route will go all the way down. General Gym, come up C D R, and then we'll stop off right in front of Jose's Restaurant on Del Monte, and then it will circle back around, so there'll be multiple loops. They heard the request last year for more shuttles, so they're going to have three fifty-five passenger buses that will be doing the constant loop for the duration of the show. And with that, that ends my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Assistant Member Garcia Zola.
Thank you for the restaurant map. Can you just go over that again? Is, where are we handing that out, or how are we going to get that to the community?
So we've been pushing this out. It's going to be pushed out on social media. Exotics is pushing it out on their area. It's going to be on the the bus, so they'll be giving it out on on the bus, and I believe there's going to be a Q R code as well attached to it, so the the, you can scan the Q R code and we'll pull you right to that map.
Oh, okay. I know where it stops. We're kind of ending it around Red's Donuts. A one, there's a lot of more restaurants on that end. If people wanted to walk, I think we should do an effort to encourage people to visit all of Seaside restaurants, not just those within close proximity. I think we have many more to offer. B four, which is Getafe, that's not open yet.
Correct.
So why would it be on the list?
Oh, well.
Or see it to be opened by that?
I think initially we were thinking it was going to be, and then there were some challenges, and and it got delayed a little bit.
Those were, those would just be my two modifications, and then since we're closing both sides of Fremont, it seems like there needs to be, I think, a larger push starting today to let community members know about that. What is going to be the new rerouting for a community, because that might get a little interesting.
We'll push out the, push out the traffic control map, and I know the Economic Development Team has been going up and down Broadway and Fremont multiple times over the last few weeks, just reminding all the business owners. Like I said, we did push out the letters, not just to the businesses, but to the residents that live within a couple blocks on each side of Broadway and Fremont as well, but we'll continue to to make sure that next week and the rest of this week, we we push out this information.
Okay, and then we also probably should publicize that. I mean, I don't know if we can publicize that, the thirty-dollar admission fee for a section on Fremont. That's also going to be new, right? So we got to be transparent and let people know that part. So those would be my only three things.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Councilmember.
Regarding the admission, I think Exotics has been doing a great job of promoting that, but it's almost coming across as the entire event is being charged, so I think for us, it would be good for community to know that there's still the free portion and then that additional.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, good comments. That's that's one of the first things that when someone in the community seen the 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 exotics ad, that's what, that's what it says, thirty dollars. And so the confusion was, you know, how much does it cost to get in, so if you know, what is the plan to to straighten that out? That the event is free, and then they have a section for for thirty dollars, you know, we just had to be more, had to be intentional about that, not just say, hey, it's free and just keep moving. We have to say that it's free, and you know, at the end of the day, would we know the difference between twenty-five thousand and twenty-two thousand? And two thousand people didn't come down because they thought it would cost thirty dollars, right? But the point is, all twenty-two, twenty-five thousand should know it's free. If they want to go on this part, they have thirty dollars, so I thought those were good comments. My, my, I I think I heard about Volar supposed to continue to come up with some stuff, especially some after-action, you know, videos for us to to promote. I I have one little, well, I've got several concerns, but when we talk about the de Le Mans, right, and somewhere in that, and their advertisement says to ruin Monterey Car Week. You know, I I understand the concept. I know it's a little cute, but but for me, I I don't want Seaside to be part of anything that's what is it, ruining Monterey Car Week, right? And so if we have anything to do with that type of statements, we should not be supporting those type of statements. People do like to go out there and look at those cars. I don't think it ruins Monterey Car Week. I think it's something special, something we have. But we should, anything that that people said to down Seaside, I'm not with. Right? I'm not with, and I'm not going to support it. How much, no, I don't care how long they've been here, so we had to figure out how to change that, right? We want them, but you're an asset to Car Week. You're not a ruining Car Week, in my opinion. Then I think on the newscast, it said forty thousand people are going to be here, and you say twenty-five. I think, you know, we need to figure out how to get that up. I know the newscast is made and and things of that nature, so just something. You said they're going to continue to clean up, which is fine. That's that's good. Cleaning up all the way until Saturday. Parking on General Gym more, I guess, Eucalyptus, right? Are we going to have, they're going to have security out there?
Yes, they are.
Right? Not not just at the gate, but actually going up and down the road, because
Yes.
You know, I know a couple people last year, hey, I got back to my car. You know, I know a couple of people last year, hey, I got back to my car and somebody went in it.
Confirm that with them, but they, they do, they did say they will be monitoring that area.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, okay. All right. Uh, and then the first aid station. I know it's in the building, but it's going to be signage that if I'm at Broadway, I, I know to run down to the middle of the block for first aid.
Yeah, we're going to put the tents out so people will know the city of Seaside is present right there with first aid.
Yeah, I mean, it's important. I mean, just, you know, I don't want nobody to come ill and they can't get to the first aid station. And then you said three shuttles. I don't know how many shuttles it was last year, but we had two, right? So I mean, three is not that much, you know, it's not you, right? But I don't want us thinking like three is a lot. Three is probably the minimum. And I'm not sure that's going to work because people were waiting and waiting so long, they started walking down the hill. Right? Uh, I think I parked on General Gym more and I'm going. And then what is this city manager closing at twelve AM? I mean, closing the street from twelve AM, what, what do people do? You know, getting off work, coming home, they're waking up, going to work. And how is the circulation? How are we working to get people uh, in and out of those areas that normally go that section on Broadway, right? We think about, well, you could just go out that way or you just go out that way. But their normal thing is to go down Broadway and I understand the detours and stuff and, but last year, I think I, it must have been like eight in the morning, right before, well, eight in the morning, it was, it was blocked, right? So do we have to do it at twelve?
Yeah, they started at twelve last year too, when you think about all the, um, the structures that are being built, the fences that are going up. We're having, you know, barricades put out on the streets on on a variety of different areas.
But that was the thing, right? I got caught in that because I think I came out at like seven thirty to go somewhere and I called myself, go and get on Fremont. And then I had to go back up the street and I didn't know how far to go down. And some of those streets are, um, you know, they get smaller and smaller. So if you put an extra three hundred, four hundred cars on the detour, right? That's, that's significant. And I don't want us to think all we got to do is just put up a couple of detour signs and it'd be, it'd be okay. And so I'm with council member, I'm with all the council, but council member Alexis Garcia said, Arizona said that putting that information out early enough, and I, and I don't think it's too early to start telling the most significant areas. You know, Saturday, you know, for nine hours, I guess you, you won't be going this route, right? So uh, and, and I would just end by saying it's, it's, you know, we support the designs on Broadway, but this, how this one goes will determine my support going forward about, you know, supporting them coming back. If we can't work it out and it's just a, a headache that, that the majority of council don't want, then, then we got to think about that. So it's, so that's just two cents on the ether. Well, you, you got something, uh, Councilmember Garcia Zola?
Thank you. Uh, so just to touch again on the Volar production, are they going to be doing video onsite that day of and post-production?
I don't know. I haven't gotten confirmation if they're going to be here for that day. I know we, we were discussing it and they're working on their staff to see if they can come out here. They have some other conflicts. But we, we will have other staff taking photos and and pictures and we'll, we'll work on our own post-production.
Okay, cool. I just think it'd be nice for us to have our own content. So just to have on hand. And then another question about speeding and burnouts, what's going to be the, the tactic to sort of minimize that disturbance? Because during Car Week, as we know, a lot of people come here, complain about people doing burnouts or revving their engines and it's just what we hear around during Car Week. But what's going to be the process? I know last year as well, there was some, some, some races, if I can't, you know, street racing. So what, what's going to be the, the tactic for safety?
I'll defer to the police chief on that one, if, if I may.
Thank you. Yes, we'll have additional staffing throughout the, the next couple of weeks here working. And they also have the countywide stop program where all the motor officers throughout the county come together. They'll be passing through Seaside, they'll be doing a lot of work also in Monterey and covering some of the border areas between each city to have extra enforcement. But we do anticipate that happening this year as it does every year throughout the, the county or the peninsula, yeah.
Thank you for that. And I imagine that there's going to be partnerships with CHP as well?
Yes, CHP is involved as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else for, I would just add, uh, the same concerns with the restaurant map. You know, we're sitting here right now and, and how Meterra is still listed as, as a viable entity. And then I would imagine some of them may not want the headache, they may not be open. So I would ask that we again, check them to see what their commitment is to be open. I know we don't have no, you know, we don't have no say over open and closed. But we definitely don't want to be handing out flyers saying, hey, go down here, get something to eat. And that place has no intention of being open, uh, you know.
Gotcha.
Right? Yeah, it's about service and I know you, you are committed to that. Just, so thank you so much. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Um, I've always been a big supporter of exotics. On Broadway brings a lot of economic growth to the businesses. My question is for clarification. Okay, so for clarification, um, what is the issue that we're debating whether we're going to allow this to come back next year or not? One, two, did any of the council members or anybody here attend any of the listening sessions? That's a great opportunity to give all your concerns out and those concerns be met. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. I guess I, I speak to some of the questions, I guess. I was the one mentioned about what I said was clearly is my support. The council, uh, is going to do what the council wants to do and I support the council. But I have to look at this every year because it's a request every year and it has to work for the community, not just the entity that is given the event. Uh, and then secondly, in, in my opinion, it would be inappropriate for the council members to go to the listening session that is made for the local businesses to get the interaction between the the event sponsor and the business and the community members. We, we, as other council members, I want to hear what the thoughts are up here. Not have a council member go and have some type of private conversation, which they can. But at the listening session, it's about listening to the public and listening to the business owners, but particularly the business owners. Because they're impacted quite a bit with these street closures and things of that nature. So we always been committed to making sure our businesses are included and that they are selling what they sell as much as possible during Car Week and especially during, anytime we close down Broadway, we should be looking at that. So bringing it back to the council, again, it's about receiving a report. So are there any additional comments somebody would like to make? Uh, if not, I would deem the report received and we will go on to uh, council members' requests. Levina, a new council members' request. Uh, Councilmember Garcia Zola?
Thank you. Uh, I've been seeing a lot on social media from PD about domestic violence calls and domestic violence situations that are going on. So I'd like to see if we can receive a report on numbers of these types of calls that we receive today. And whether or not we can establish a committee or a task force to address the, the issue centered on domestic violence.
Any more? Okay, city manager follow up on previous requests?
Um, no detail tonight, but we do have two outstanding, which is one is the board education. Uh, and, and, um, board education and promotion, and then also unsolicited development proposals. So both of those should have action at the next meeting.
What was the one on board education? I don't, I don't remember.
I believe it's Councilmember Burke's request for, uh, further, further commission and board education and promotion.
Commission members' education.
Correct.
Okay, I was hearing board of education.
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Boards, boards and commissions.
Okay, that's, that's what I said. What? I haven't heard about that one yet. Uh, okay, thank you so much. Uh, let's go to city attorney, city manager, city council and mayor's comments on boards, reports and committee assignments. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I had the honor of participating in a Department of Justice Care Court Training. Toward the end of July, Care Court is a new state program that is designed to help people with untreated mental illness have early intervention in order to get them to voluntarily agree. And it requires, you know, kind of a, a wraparound of services. So trying to see if Seaside could benefit from participation in that program. And then number two, my fun thing for the weekend was I was able to recently attend Blues in Park, caught the tail end of Lori Morvan. It was wonderful, beautiful weather, lots of people, and I enjoyed that. Thank you to our teams who put those programs together.
Uh, city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Assistant City Manager and Dan Mavis and I had the ability or the opportunity to go to the monthly Monterey Bay Area City Managers Meeting in Marina. It was a great opportunity to, uh, to, uh, work with City Marina and, and talk about how their development projects may impact our development projects and vice versa uh, on the north side of the community. Uh, we also on July twenty-first had the Main Gate Mixed Use Development RFP Pre-Submital Meeting, uh, which was well attended. Great questions were asked from potential, uh, submittals, uh, proposers on that opportunity. Last week I was able to, uh, have a meeting with Community Partnership for Youth, CPY, with our program mentors and, uh, where I received two hundred and sixty-three handwritten lettered letters to the city of Seaside saying thank you for our continued partnership, uh, on multiple levels. And then on Friday, had a second all employee meeting at Oldemire, which was well attended. Employees asked great questions. We were able to do some Q and A, uh, with our long-term vision and, and, and existing projects. And then finally, uh, just was able to attend the National Night Out and then, uh, several Blues in the Parks since the last meeting. Just want to say thank you to, uh, all the recreation staff, uh, and obviously, uh, law enforcement, everybody else who helped put on those two events, uh, for our community.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, National Night Out. It was great to see, uh, the, the attendance there and our, our, our police department, I think, did a great job of showing that, uh, some of the vehicles that we have. Also, today I had a CHS strategic planning session, which, uh, working forward to adding beds, to providing service to homeless people in, in Seaside and into our county. Uh, and then last night I went to the Monterey Bay Union game, close game, we lost, but, uh, wanted to keep them on our radar as I think they're going to make the playoffs hopefully. So that's good news and I look forward to Car, Car Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke.
Um, I too was able to attend National Night Out and it's great just to see all of the resources offered to our community. I wanted to give a thank you to Parks and Rec. They recently expanded their after-school program Kids Club, so it'll be on our site. And I've got nothing but positive, um, comments and, uh, shares from parents and even our, my staff about it being well organized. Kids are safe and they're happy and excited. Um, so that was a great kickoff for the school year. And then to Public Works, um, on Kenneth, there's been a huge plumbing pipe issue and the homeowner wanted me to just thank them and the neighbors because having to have this large tractors and trailers and a porta potty, um, that they were nothing but, um, excellent customer service. So that was a great, um, report to share. And then tomorrow I have my AMP meeting, finally. That's it.
Uh, Councilmember Garcia Zola?
Thank you. Since the last time we met, uh, I attended, well, I was invited to a lunch talk with the Hospice Giving Foundation where we received a presentation from CEO, uh, the CEO from Montage Health, um, that discussed the impacts that the recent, uh, big beautiful bill, so, so they're calling that bill, uh, how that would impact our region when it comes to healthcare and the potential loss and coverage for our constituents and how that would then drive up, uh, emergency room visits. So it's, it's going to have some, some very serious consequences and effects, um, but CEO of Montage is taking proactive measures to ensure that, one, there's access to healthcare for everybody, regardless of whether or not you're going to be insured, you will be treated. It's just a matter of fact as to how they're going to coordinate and, and push these efforts forward. But as we, as we can tell, we are living in a very costly region and the whole county. So there's a need for more nurses and doctors and, um, more practitioners in our region. So it's an ongoing conversation that I thought was insightful and provided, um, some, some insight as to what, how we can solidify our collaboration between, uh, us as an agency, but also with our healthcare providers. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the Board of Directors Meeting for Monterey One Water where we approved the Central Coast Long-Term Environmental Assessment Network Budget in the amount of one hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars. We awarded a construction contract to Specialty Construction for CP three, four, six fire pump house, fire storage tanks and well water tank project in the amount of one point nine million. We approved Second Amendment to USP Technologies for the Full Service Sulfide Control Program for the Collection System and Wastewater Treatment Plan for the amount of two point four million. And we also approved a professional services agreement with Black and Veatch for Engineering Services for Solids Handling and Resource Recovery Improvements in the amount of two point three million dollars. So it was a very fruitful, um, board meeting, uh, and that's all I have to report out.
Thank you, Mayor Boatam.
Thank you. Um, I think I tend, I tended the last few Sunday Blues and want to thank the mayor who's been there every time as well as the city manager. That's very unique to, uh, from past years, and I think the series has gone well with one more week is this Sunday and this series will be over. Tended hot cars, cold nights on Broadway, uh, good turnout, a lot of cars. It's a traditional event Seaside, uh, residents seem to enjoy it. Again, National Night Out, a lot of resources. It looked like a lot of the residents were actually attending and visiting and spending time with the, with the booths and there was kids activities, a lot of good energy out there. Attended the first practice of the Seaside Raiders. They, there's a really good number of kids out there, parents, grandparents, uh, coaches are well organized. I just wanted to thank the coaches, the board of directors and the parents for the commit, their commitment. Tended the art show at City Hall, great turnout. Thank you, Sandra Gray. Been tending a couple of the farmers markets. You really need some community sports, uh, support during the summertime now. I mean, because the vegetables are there, the, the fruit's there and, uh, it seems to be a few more people, which is good. But it, it always needs, uh, more, um, community support. And then I attended FOSVA. I believe it was at Capra Park and again, if you look at pictures from five years ago at Capra to now, it's, it's huge. It, it's a big difference and I think the residents enjoy it. I enjoy visiting it and I think all the community's very supportive of that. That's it, sir. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I just want to highlight the, uh, the fabric art exhibition that is here at City Hall at the Avery Art Gallery. It's beautiful. It's colorful. If you haven't really been down here in a long time, you should come down and see it before, uh, the next one is, 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 it's in its place. But this is, I think this is the first one of fabric art and it's just beautiful, uh, to see those type of quilts and, and dresses and rugs and just art pieces, really. Uh, I attended the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, uh, meeting, uh, one meeting and then the chair, vice chair meeting and then another legislative, uh, committee meeting. Uh, and that really focused on our advocacy at the federal and state level as relates to water policy and, and getting grants for water projects here, uh, and within the district of the, uh, Water Management District. Doing a lot of good work. I want to thank, um,
for water projects here uh, and within the district of the uh, Water Management District. Doing a lot of good work. I wanna thank um, our Congressman, uh, Congressman Panetta and, and our senators for uh, making sure they made rule, make room for uh, the water dissectionly as relates to water and water projects that are needed uh, to move uh, communities forward. Uh, presented a proclamation to uh, IndyCar Champion, uh, Scott Dix uh, for his uh, partnership with the MPC Bank for their literacy program where he read to uh, uh, was it uh, uh, three-year-olds and had a wonderful time with his uh, racing gear and, and a handful of three-year-olds. Uh, and that was uh, put together and led by our, our Councilmember, uh, uh, Councilmember Burke. Uh, some of you may know that she is the principal at our dual-language school, uh, doing wonderful things with those kids at the school and she made it possible, uh, I believe reached out to uh, um, that literacy group partnership and got the uh, the champion here to reach our kids. It was a wonderful thing to see those kids interact with him. So we really wanna uh, thank him and MPC Bank, but actually highlight uh, the work of a Councilmember Burke and what she does for this community and our, our kids, uh, starting off at the early ages. Uh, tended uh, and presented a, a proclamation to Mrs. Dorothy Hill on her ninety-fifth uh, birthday. Uh, and so, so proud to do that and glad to do that. And I would just say that, you know, me and the um, city clerk try to do as much as we can. We, we know uh, she's not the only one turning ninety-five and we hope more people turn ninety-five, but it was a pleasure for us to do that. And we always look that if there's anybody else in this community that wants to honor their, their loved ones that way, we're, we're open to do that. So again, uh, congratulations, Mrs. Hill, on your ninety-fifth birthday. And I know it's a lot of people in Seaside that are uh, have ninety, have nine decades. Almost said ninety decades, right? Have nine decades underneath their belt and so we're so proud of them. I attended the uh, uh, Monterey College of Law Dean Winnick's uh, Retirement Party. Uh, he did twenty years as President Dean of Monterey College of Law and moved that college uh, so far down the road. Longest-serving dean by far, uh, opened up satellites uh, here in King County and other counties and San Benito County. Uh, so he just did a lot of wonderful work and, and we wanna wish him well uh, on his retirement, but he's still out there working, still out there volunteering for a nonprofit. Uh, did, did a welcome for the Seaside Raiders and cheer team uh, during one of those practices. And I know uh, they had a good time. You know, my comments to them on behalf of the council and, and the residents really was just, you know, have fun, respect each other, you know, your players and the coaches and uh, stay in school and, and listen to your parents. So I was pretty clear with them. That's, that's what I want them to do. Is have fun, uh, respect yourself and others. Stay in school and then respect your parents. I mean, listen to your parents. And I know uh, the head administrators, you know, Coach Bynne and Claudia, uh, city manager, they did say that they would like to have a sit-down and, and talk to you as, as soon as um, um, schedules can align themselves, but uh, not necessarily rush, rush, but they do want to talk with you. Um, uh, I think it was me and um, City Manager Dan Mulis set on the last of the Blue Zone Steering and Leadership Committee meetings. Uh, we've been holding those, like we said earlier, for about six years now. And that was our last meeting and our work is done with that committee. Now we come back in within our cities and try to make sure our cities move the Blue Zone forward. So I wanna thank uh, Mr. Mulis for uh, his commitment over the last uh, six years about bringing that to Seaside. These conversations we had a long time ago and he stayed true to that commitment and we're finally here. And I know a lot of people gave you hard times about what is this Blue Zone thing? What do you mean eating, eating healthy? Getting away plastic and all of this other stuff and drinking water instead of sodas and, you know, things like that. And don't, don't give out potato chips. Give out slices of apples or something, right? But he, he had to really take the arrows and sometimes the arrows came from this council, right? Sometimes I threw some of those arrows at him. So I got especially over the water, water and stuff like, but I wanna, no, it was over the uh, little ketchup packages. Remember we had those conversations and stuff, right? And so, uh, I just wanna say thank you for all of that. Uh, the citizens will be healthier because of what you have done. I attended the Tamse Rail Committee Meeting uh, at the one station over in Salinas, the rail station at the Salinas. Uh, we're making great strides on bringing uh, the train from Sacramento, well, it's coming from Gilroy now to uh, Salinas, uh, slowly but surely. The object is for you to get on the train in Salinas and go down to LA and definitely go up to uh, Sacramento. Uh, so uh, Salinas is, is, is a big stop. Uh, part of that advocacy was of uh, uh, um, all of our elected officials from the federal level all the way down, but uh, when we went over there, we had a good briefing from a former congressman Sam Farr. Uh, he gave us a good background about what the last twenty-five years, uh, thirty years of working on this has been. So I wanna thank him. Attended National Night Out. Again, thank Chief Borges uh, and our Fire, Fire Chief for, for being there and getting it done. And the other county and nonprofit agencies that tabled, uh, the community really appreciated to be going out and, and interacting with the tables. And the services that are provided by those nonprofits and county agencies. So uh, it, it's a National Night Out meeting. Every city that participated had the same activity on the same night. But I say that to say every city did not, does not have a National Night Out, right? Even in this area. So it's a good thing and, and we thank the chief and thank the city manager for doing all those logistics to get those things done. Uh, like the, Mayor Potem said, Hot Cars Cool Night, uh, last Friday, uh, in these months, in the summer months, um, uh, it's excellent. Uh, went to the last one. The theme was Corvette, beautiful cars out there. Uh, I would ask that if anybody has not been out there for Hot Cars Cool Nights, you're missing a family-friendly event. Uh, you get to walk down the middle of Fremont without worrying about it and look at beautiful cars uh, from all different um, generations of cars and models. Uh, I would just say, and I think the, the city manager is planning on uh, bringing forth the Social Service Grant um, um, process. Don't, we don't know how it's gonna go because of, consult the council how that process goes. Uh, but I believe that's supposed to be coming up forward. Um, and I think that's it. And before we go into uh, closed session, uh, we are closing the meeting in the honor of, of several people and their, their faces and, and names are, are there. And if there's any council members that may wanna speak to that issue, we, is now is the time. It was, uh, Councilmember Garcia Zola.
Thank you. I just wanna um, speak uh, a little bit about Ms. Lori, uh, who worked for the City of Seaside. She was, she was an amazing person. I remember when it first started. She was one of the first people that introduced herself to me and she always had this smile and this optimism. Every time I would pass by her office, she'd turn around and take at least five minutes of her time to talk to me. And, and I remember in one instance, she, she was so surprised at how we've gotten to know each other over the, over the past few years and, and she didn't know my age. So she was surprised about that. But I think what, what really taught me about Laura, Ms., what Ms. Lori taught me was always looking at everything through a positive lens, a positive light and, and having a smile on, on, on one's face. And she never once spoke about what she was going through and I never asked, um, out of respect, but she was, she was a fighter. She was a fighter and I think that, that shows a lot um, uh, of, of what who she was as a person. And also, uh, Dr. Michelle, I think she was an amazing person full of laughter and, and just joy. He, large smile, uh, every time she would see you and, and just beautiful people inside and outside as well. And, and I'm super um, grateful to have met her and learned from her and recognize her contributions that she did to our region as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mayor Potem?
Dr. Horn, through her presentations at uh, the Oldemire Center and a few other places, and she was always proactive in helping people be better, helping better related to help and just going up to them individually and seeing how they, how she could help. And, and everything I heard about her, she was very proactive in reaching out to residents and making sure they're, they're better. And a lovely lady. And then uh, Officer Gooden, we knew from decades ago, uh, I think they called him Papa Smurf. Uh, and uh, he was amazing individual. I think one of his proudest moments, I think the chief was part of that. Uh, the city uh, was able to get him as a reserve officer, was able to get him a thirty-year badge. And I think that was the first time a reserve officer received it. And he was, he was thrilled with that. But he helped out uh, back in the day with uh, Sunday Blues in the Park, La Pasada, St. Quinote Mile, all the special events. He was always available to my knowledge on a, on a call basis and loved to work with the residents. He was involved with the Fourth of July Parade, always uh, leading the parade. He was just always there and, and he also was involved with the Junior Giants for probably up to ten years. Uh, coaching teams, cooking hot dogs, uh, helping organize the program. He was a really strong representative of uh, the PAL program with the City of Seaside. When the cops, the police officers were more directly involved with that, took a, an initiative and he was one of those guys that always took a, a initiative and making a difference, especially for our kids and the community. And then Betty, we knew just a really sweet, kind lady. But, and I served on some committees with her and she just always got the job done, always had creative ideas. And in her own way was a fighter for the police officers when she didn't have to be a fighter because that wasn't in her job. But she fought was right. She fought for what she cared about. And she, I think she was very involved with the morale of the department for a long time as far as enhancing it and making sure the police officers felt good about where they were at and just enhancing the city uh, through her activities and just always kind. And when she got off work, she had a smile. When she came to work, she had a smile. Just a really cool lady. And I only knew Lori a little bit uh, cause I went to school with her, her boyfriend. Um, just always friendly, though always kind, always helpful. Uh, in the area that she lived, uh, she was concerned uh, through our discussions about her residents, that her neighbors, you just had a fond place in her park for a season. I really enjoyed being part of the Seaside family. So unfortunately, I didn't know the other young lady uh, to my memory. Uh, but all good people. It's a shame that we're losing these, these wonderful people that make huge difference in people's lives so quickly. And that's uh, sad and unfortunate, but I, I'm sure they're all in a better place. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I think you're right. I think they are in a, a better place and you know, it's hard for me. I had a pleasure knowing all of them. And, and so it's hard for me to, to, to now to try to uh, pick out anybody to highlight. So I just wanna talk about it in general for, you know, a minute or so. It's just uh, when you talked about all them together, right? It just so happens that all of them had a deep relationship with the city itself because it's, it's, it's people passing away today that, that we're not highlighting. Uh, because their interaction was not necessarily with the city and, and the council. Their interaction was with a, a nonprofit or inside their families and stuff like that. But these people just happen to have an interaction here with the city and, and we all benefited from that interaction, from their daily work. You know, they're beautiful people, you know, worked hard all their life. Uh, they loved their families and their friends and I'm sure they had joy and and some pain and all that stuff. And, but they worked in, someone worked for the city, but they worked in and around to make the community a better community. You know, make Seaside a better community for the time that they were with us. All of them had a zeal for life. When you meet them, they had a smile on their face and, you know, they had friends and they had loved ones and they were uh, just people that, that, I, I can't remember uh, any of them really being one of those that complained. You know, like you say, even when Laura was uh, was, was going through, was not going through, when she was fighting, right? When she was fighting, she, she wouldn't lead with, hey, I'm fighting. You know, this cancer, I'm fighting this. She was just, how are you doing? You know, what, what do I need to do for work? And so a lot of times I would go over there and have to do some business in finance and we were interact and and she would just ask me how I'm doing. And like you said, Alexis, you know, you stay away from, you know, exactly how, you know, asking that person because you know they're, they're fighting. And so, uh, and, and I can go down the list, right? And I don't wanna really go down the list, but, cause they're all equally wonderful and equally, equally will be missed uh, by those that knew them all. Uh, and I would just say, may they all rest knowing that their work in this life does speak loud for them. Anyone that knows them know that their work here speaks loud for them. So uh, we will close the, the meeting in their, in their memory. Uh, particularly after uh, we get back from closed session. So uh, thank you guys for that. And I would ask the city attorney to uh, read us in a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council will have a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. The property in question is One McClure Way, commonly known as the uh, Black Horse and Banet Golf Course and the Grand Hyatt Hotel Site. Agency negotiators, city manager at all. Negotiating parties are the Seaside Acquisition Group and the City of Seaside under negotiation price terms of payment or both. They will have a conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine on two matters of existing litigation. The first is Monterey County Superior Court Case Number two, four, CV zero, zero, two, eight, seven, two. That case name is Seaside Highland Homeowners Association versus the City of Seaside. The second case is Monterey County Superior Court Case Number two, five, CV zero, zero, one, zero, three, six. The case name is the City of Seaside versus Seaside Highlands Homeowners Association. And finally, they'll have a conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine D two on two potential matters of litigation. For the benefit of the public, I do not expect there to be any um, reportable action taken during closed session this evening.
Uh, thank you. Uh, public comment is open on our closed session items.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Um, the litigation for Seaside Highlands Homers, um, Owner Association. Is that regards, can you elaborate more? Is that regards to trees? Um, more detail on why the litigation is happening, the topic? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, public comment is closed on the closed session items. Uh, city attorney, whether any questions, issues or concerns you can answer at this time.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, to the caller requesting additional information on the two uh, matters of existing litigation. Um, briefly, the uh, filed complaints for the Seaside Highlands Homeowners Association versus City of Seaside deals generally with mitigation fees that were paid for the development of the Seaside Highlands Project. And the general subject matter of the case, City of Seaside versus Seaside Highlands Homeowners Association uh, deals with trees, sidewalks and the requirement uh, to comply with the conditions, covenants and restrictions to maintain such uh, deals with trees, sidewalks and the requirement uh, to comply with the conditions, covenants and restrictions to maintain such um, trees.
Uh, thank you. We will move into closed session.